This regular meeting of the Board of Education for June 26, 2018 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and our TV viewers. It's clearly a summer board meeting. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. The meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin attending all regular board meetings. Specifically Judy will be here. Where is Judy? Is she here? There she is. Be here to listen to public comment and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 and at ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters here this evening and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in a language. They will be interpreting and inform the audience where they'll be located.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Lucia Cabrejos, soy la intérprete en español. Si me necesitan voy a estar sentada cerca de la entrada. Gracias.
Chao, quíen quiera comunicar a un miembro de Vietnam, por favor, venga al fondo del Consejo. Habrá un comunicado para el miembro. Venga.
Hola, me llamo Tha Tia Na. Si necesitan traducción en idioma ruso, por favor, acaben de ir a la derecha y yo puedo ayudarles. Gracias.
Thank you. So before we begin our agenda items, we're going to have a slight change in our practice tonight. I'm going to ask board members if there's any items on the business agenda that they have questions on. This does not include those individual action items listed on tonight's agenda. But I'd like board members to flag any questions they may, any resolutions they may have questions about or things in the business agenda because otherwise we will allow, let staff know that they don't need to stay. But if we have questions, we'll ask staff to stay to the business agenda. So board members, any items in the business agenda? Not yet. Okay, so I guess all staff who have items on business agenda, all clear. So we also, pardon? Are you asking to leave?
They should stand by for the signal, not just get up.
So I'd like to provide an overview of the business that the board will be conducting tonight. We will begin with a goodbye to our student representative Moses Tran. Very sad evening for all of us. We'll hold a ratification vote on the PAT substitute teachers contract. We'll have a report from our superintendent, hold student public comment. Consider two policy first readings, hold the second reading and a vote on the wellness policy. Adopt the 2018 budget. Consider two appeals, discuss the board summer calendar. In addition, I want to note for board members and the public that we have two additional resolutions we're going to consider tonight. One of them, I believe Ms. Houston, is Resolution 5680 going to be in the business agenda or is it going to be a freestanding vote?
You can include it.
Okay, so I'm going to pass out now this resolution just so everybody has it for later. It is part of the package of the Head Start Policy Resolutions that we need to consider and adopt tonight. So that's another item. In addition, I want to thank Director Sparza Brown for bringing Resolution Number 5679, which we will consider shortly. So we have two additional items for consideration. So with that, we're going to start out tonight by saying goodbye to our student representative Moses Tran. And I'd say thank you to Moses for really injecting student voice into our discussions and for agreeing to tackle the revisions to the student representative policy, holding the First Annual Student Rep Summit and coming up with some ideas to going forward, I think, bring more student voice into the process. So thank you. And I'm going to ask Director Konstam to, on behalf of the board, to also say some goodbyes.
So Moses, I just want to recognize first all of the incredible time and hard work that you have put into this. This has been a year of particularly intensive board activities, more meetings, longer meetings, really trying to set a new tone and get started on a lot of different work strands under the new superintendent. And you have been there every step of the way, really actively and intelligently engaged and always bringing forward the student voice and asking the best questions. And what I particularly appreciate is that you wanted to address the structural problems that you recognized at the district in terms of students not being at the center of our decision-making process. And this is a value that Superintendent Guerrero also brought with him from his experience in San Francisco and from having some different ways of doing things and different ways of integrating students into policymaking and decision-making. So I think the two of you together have gotten a start on crafting something that will really be meaningful for students moving forward. Because this is not, this should not be a token role. It should really be an opportunity for students to guide the work of the rest of us here. So I think you have done that with great integrity and intelligence. And I for one am going to miss you. And we have something for you on behalf of our whole board as you set off on your very exciting future as a student at Portland State University.
Well, thank you. And, um. Well, I ask first, I really want to thank the student body of Portland Public Schools for allowing me to serve them as their student representative because without them, well, I would be out of a job, kind of. So. And that, just that our students continue to demonstrate and grow to be amazing leaders, not just from our high school students, but all the way down from pre-K. And I really got to see that while I was volunteering at Roseway Heights and just see the students be so excited and ask me questions like, oh, like, do you want to become a teacher someday? And I'm like, yes, like, I want to be a teacher someday. Or, you know, like, and them just sharing like their dreams and what they want to become someday. And, you know, the sky is really not the limit for them. So just to see that that inspiration is instilled in our students all the way to pre-K. And then just that it's the responsibility of the district student council to continue just creating spaces for our student leaders to grow and build upon each other because it's so unique to be a student and be a leader and be active in these conversations because you, sometimes you are just the only one in the room who is a student. And it, you know, that we have to find each other and build upon each other and support each other and do the work that we just do, that we do because it's not just doing the hard work, but the work that needs to be done. And I really believe that Nick and his team will continue doing that work. And I just hope that during my term and the count, this year's council, is that we laid that foundation for our future student leaders to build upon and grow and flourish in our district. And I'm hopeful that student voice will continue to flourish in our district. And they'll be the first to be called on, first to be heard and first, always first on our agenda. So I'm just super thankful to have the opportunity to sit in this position. And then finally, I would like to thank my family and my mentor and my grandma because without them, this would have never been a part of my high school career. And I'm just thankful to have them, so.
Since in my professional role, I work with future teachers. You need to come see me at Portland State. The other piece that I would like to share with you is please, I invite you to look for those leadership opportunities at the university, at PSU, because we need leaders like you. And I've always been so impressed with your leadership here and your insights. So please continue to share that in your, in your new educational endeavors.
Thank you.
So look forward to seeing you there.
So Moses, what do we do whenever we recognize somebody? You've got to stand up and have a picture with the board.
So Moses, you also need some new gear. So we've got PSU jacket for you. And I did avoid the Viking mascot because not knowing how long that's going to last. So here you go. Time to trade in your PIL gear and your Benson gear for some PSU gear. Yeah, it's pretty bad.
Thank you, Moses, so much for representing the student body here at Portland Public Schools and representing them through your voice. Thank you.
And we'll try and have this meeting done before midnight. I'm just kidding, it's supposed to be done way before. We know you don't have any homework tomorrow.
In that spirit, back to the contracts. First student is on there for a vote? And we? Okay. And that's, that's an extension for two years? Seems like we should have some discussion on that.
What's an ext, what's it?
For student.
Are you going back?
Yeah.
We did have discussion at FAO pretty extensively the other day. If you want to pull it, we can share.
Yes, that would be helpful.
Okay, so hopefully the transportation person is still here. Okay, next on the agenda, I'd like to call on Director Sparza Brown for a resolution for this evening.
So I propose a resolution tonight that, the wording was adapted from the Council of Great City Schools around kind of the politics of families and children that we've all, you know, seen the heart-wrenching stories of what's happening across the nation. So the recitals are, the family, in all its many and disparate forms, is the bedrock of society and the foundation on which our educational system is built. As educators, we see firsthand the power of families in ensuring that children are well-cared-for and have the opportunity to learn and grow. When families are fractured, dysfunctional, or absent, our schools often serve as surrogate parents, a role that while necessary, is a weak substitute for the real thing. That is why we work so hard to engage families. We know that nothing takes the place of this central ballast in a child's life. Families of all kinds are critical to the well-being of children and their intellectual, social, and personal development. They are sacrosanct, sacrosanct to our civilization, or so we thought. Now we are witness to a national policy where families are little more than political fodder and children are so much partisan leverage. The evidence of psychological, physiological, academic, and emotional damage to children who are separated from their parents are real and longstanding. Whatever one thinks needs to be done about our borders, nothing justifies the separation of children for any, for any period from their parents and caregivers for such reasons. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education condemns any policy that separates children from their families or caregivers and hereby directs the superintendent to investigate. Oh, this wasn't the final version, actually. Okay, so due to, so what I, so I move to, how do we change it? So I'd ask General Counsel Lodge.
I would continue to read it as is and then you can move to amend it.
No, I may have sent the wrong one. Okay. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education condemns any policy that separates children from their families or caregivers and hereby directs the superintendent to investigate whether we currently contract with agencies involved with separating and housing children and youth who have been removed from the care of their families and to report any findings that indicate as such. But there was a change.
Would you like to clarify?
No, so I did. I think she, let's start with the base and then she can move to amend the resolution. That may be a little overkill, honestly. If you, it's your resolution, so. And I don't know, was this posted? That's really the, the standard practice.
It's not posted yet.
Okay, so let me, let me back it up to make it easy. It's your resolution, it hasn't been posted. So why don't you articulate where the changes are?
So the changes are in recital E. After the first sentence, we've included, "Some children separated from their families under this policy are reported to be housed in Portland. The evidence of psychological, physiological, academic, and emotional damage to children who are separated from their parents is real and longstanding." Okay, so that's, the addition then was the inclusion of acknowledging that we have some of the children in agencies here in Portland.
And is that piece the only deviation from the language from the council?
No, the recital changed, yes.
Otherwise, this is what we brought forward from council?
Yes, as I said, the source, it's adapted from the Council of Great City Schools. But the resolution then, let me read you the full resolution because there was a change in that as well. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education condemns any policy that separates children from their families or caregivers and hereby directs the superintendent to investigate whether the district currently contracts with agencies involved with separating or housing children and youth who have been removed by ICE from the care of their families or are illegally sharing confidential and/or sensitive child and family information with ICE and to report back any findings.
Thank you, Director Sparza Brown. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Anthony and seconded by Director Konstam. Any discussion?
In the spirit of, in the spirit of clarifying acronyms, ICE?
Yeah, I asked, we talked about that. So the Immigration, Customs, and Enforcement Agency?
Secondly, I want to point out the first clause is, while, while the rest of the resolution is pretty specific to ICE, the first clause is pretty broad and can include all sorts of incarceration.
Which clause?
Just the first, and which I'm fine with.
Where are you going?
Any separation of children from?
Any policy that separates children from their families or caregivers. We have high rates of incarceration for people of colors, especially men of color in this country. That's basically a policy. Call it what you like, but it's, so I'm just, just.
Are you suggesting?
No, I'm not suggesting a change. I'm just pointing out that, no, I'm, that's a feature, not a bug.
Director Moore.
Sort of along the same lines. So does the, does the new resolution read the first sentence, "Any policy that separates children from their families or caregivers by ICE"? Is that?
It didn't, but we could add that.
That is in the amendment you read.
Oh, okay. I closed my computer down. That's what we put, by ICE.
Right.
So therefore we were specific.
I'm also not real happy about incarcerating families.
Want to add anything?
Director Sparza Brown, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. I think it reflects the values of our school district and I think the direction to the superintendent, which I'm sure he's eagerly willing to do it, is the right approach for, for us to take. All right, with that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Student Representative Tran?
Aye.
The motion passes on a seven to zero vote with Student Representative Tran voting aye. Thank you again, Director Sparza Brown, for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing from the superintendent.
I'm, I'm sorry, I would still like to pull another item from the business agenda.
Okay.
Sorry.
Look what a great practice this was, of just generating all sorts of interest in the business agenda.
But nobody needs to stay other than the superintendent. That would be 5675 regarding our calendar for board meetings.
Yeah, I think we have a separate agenda item on the.
Oh, yeah, we do.
We do.
Well, so we're not going to, okay. But we're still, if we don't pull it, then we're approving this before we have the discussion as a separate agenda item. So why don't we just pull it and then we can vote on it when we address it as an agenda item?
We're not voting on the business agenda till the end, though.
Oh, we're not voting till the end. Got it.
Right.
All right.
So we're just flagging things.
Got it, got it, got it.
We'll get it all down.
Change, change is hard.
But noted. All right. Now I'd like to invite Laird Cusack, the Director of Labor Relations, to introduce the next agenda item. We're happy to have reached common ground with our partners, with Portland Association of Teachers. And look forward to the presentation and the impending ratification of another contract.
Thank you. Laird Cusack, Senior Director of Employee and Labor Relations. Before you today is a resolution to approve a three-year contract with the Portland Association of Teachers Substitute Unit. We, that contract expired in June of 2016. We spent an extensive amount of time bargaining about it and it was delayed because we focused as, as both the union and the district on the regular PAT contract for a number of months. The wages in that, in this contract are, track the same as the regular PAT contract. It's 3% in 2016, 2.75% in '17, and 2.25% in July of 2018. It's because the, the rates for substitutes is directly related to the pay scale for teachers. In this contract, we, the medical benefits remained unchanged, though this group also is participating in the trust. So we also, we're paying a lower rate this year because of the, the reserves being used. We have expanded the educational sick leave law to this group of employees based on a ruling that we received from ERB, the Employee Relations Board. So they will accrue, accrue sick leave in the, in the amount that other educational employees do. But because they have a inconsistent schedule, they will accrue it based on when they work or when they're being paid. So they'll accrue 17 point, well, one day for every 17.7 days. The other change that we made that was good for the district is we, there's a requirement that they work more, the substitutes work more to remain on our lists. Because we sometimes have a hard time filling all of our vacancies that we have, we wanted to encourage substitutes to work more time.
Maybe you could clarify what that, what that means? It's not like we're making them work 15 hours a day.
Oh, no, no, no.
Is there some standard number of days?
Number, number, we increased the number of days in a given year that, we have two separate lists and we set the, the number of days that you had to work during the course of a year to remain on those lists to a higher number than it was previously. I could look it up, but it's, in both of them, we moved it up so that we could get more days of work from the substitutes on the list.
So likewise guarantee more days of work? That's a two-way street?
There is, there is no guarantee under the contract, though there's, we have, we do not have a, a problem with people getting work from those lists. It was the reverse, that some days we were not filling all of our slots. And so we wanted to have more days of, of work from the, from the employees on the, on the lists. So that's just the highlights of the contract. We had some other changes, but none of them of huge substance. And, you know, it, we finally, we're just, we're now down to one contract left open.
Yes. Thank you for your work. Board members, are there any questions? Questions now, we can get into discussion in a moment after we have a motion. But any, any questions for Mr. Cusack? If not, can I have a motion? It's been moved by Director Sparza Brown, seconded by Director Anthony. Is there any discussion?
Is there anything in the contract that improves our ability to deepen our substitute pool?
Not, not specifically. We do have a provision that would in fact give incentives associated with, we could provide incentives for working at certain schools. We are providing more training to, to the substitute teachers. And we can also identify training for specific groups of teachers, substitute teachers, if we want to improve their skills. In terms of the recruiting, there wasn't anything specific to that.
Thank you.
Questions or discussions? I just want to thank you and the team. This, we started the school year with all of our contracts open and it's good to see the last, the last board meeting of the, of the year. We are completing another one. So I'm going to call for a vote and then Mr. Burkey, if you'd like to make a few comments after the vote, we would, we would welcome that. So the ratification resolution has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Does the student rep get a vote? So the motion passes on a seven-zero vote. Congratulations to the PPS team and to the Portland Association Teachers team. Mr. Burkey. So the other half of the team.
And, and we did not coordinate.
No. It's a new sign of management labor partnership work. So thank you very much, everyone. John Burkey, Portland Association of Teachers. I'm one of the professional staff assigned by the Oregon Education Association to work with the PAT. It was a long bargain. The substitute contract is not always that long, but it was a really productive bargain. And thank you Laird for your comments. We agree with the things that you said 100%. I sort of thought about it in three basics, sort of general categories. We had changes in the contract that were basic fairness. For example, we totally revamped and made clearer and stronger the discipline language so that the district and the members were able to understand what they were facing at different times. We did very sensible things like change things such as access to members and also membership, just basic working elements of the contract, like processing membership. We had some common sense things like, for example, giving people a chance to have additional training, as Laird pointed out. It gave them, that strengthens the substitute skills and serves the students better and provides a better workforce for PPS. Generally speaking, it was a positive experience for everyone involved in spite of the length of time and the number of meetings. And the, I'm happy to report that, as your vote was, the PAT substitute teachers and its membership overwhelmingly voted yes on this also.
Yay.
Great. We actually get a little time off, everybody.
We really appreciate both of your, the team's works to bring this to us tonight and I think we're all delighted to have ratified it unanimously, so.
Thank you.
Remind us, please, the duration of this contract.
Till 2019.
So do we start negotiating next week on the...
Yes.
Yeah.
I said a little time off.
Nope. Great, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask Superintendent Guerrero, sort of the end of the year, or end of the school year wrap-up.
Well, good evening, Board of Education Directors and Republican Staff. Let me start off with the first topic, new hires. I'm excited to announce two critically important additions to the leadership team. It's my pleasure to announce that we have hired Claire Hertz as Deputy Superintendent for Business and Operations, and Dr. Craig Quayar as our new Chief of Schools. I'm sharing with, with our Board a related press release related to these individuals and their new roles. We really are fortunate to have educational leaders of this caliber joining our team. Claire Hertz comes to us from the Beaverton School District. She served in a number of roles, most recently as their esteemed Chief Financial Officer. She brings locally and nationally recognized abilities to establish systems and best practices that support improved student outcomes. Craig Quayar comes to us from the Baltimore County Public Schools, where he was Community Superintendent for the nation's twenty-fifth largest district and directed central office personnel and a cohort of principals. I believe these two hires, along with the other strong group of leaders they'll be joining that we've brought on board recently, give us the kind of horsepower we need to bring transformational change to PPS. And I still look forward to sharing some additional leadership announcements in the coming weeks. Visioning, a vision for our future. This morning, I spoke to all of our central office personnel who gathered here to preview our plans for, for launching a community-wide process to imagine a new vision for, for public education and PPS here in Portland. And we have begun this week by starting this initial phase of a comprehensive initiative to define our North Star, which will guide and align our plans and priorities as a broader school community. So if you imagine the kindergarten class that began school last fall, and they're graduating from high school in 2030, think about what kind of world they will be walking into. How might we, as a public school system, prepare them to succeed and thrive in that world? So the Board and I look forward to engaging the broader PPS community to think about how we might orient and reimagine our public school system to better prepare all of our students for those demands and opportunities of the future. We'll be communicating regularly on the progress of this important initiative. It'll proceed for a few months. I know that we are looking for input from all corners of the city in this process, and certainly, our Board members will be hoping to, to host a forum in each of their zones as, as we embark on this visioning process. So stay tuned for more information on our visioning process, which, which is a key priority, and we've reserved resources to be able to engage in that process. COSA, I spent a few days last week with other members of my leadership team, along with other school leaders, at the Confederation of School Administrators Annual Summer Conference. These kinds of events always serve a few purposes. One, to rec, a chance to learn from recognized subject matter experts on some really relevant topics, a chance to network and share some best practices with other educational leaders in this state, and a chance to spend some time off-campus with colleagues to discuss some of our work and problem-solve our next steps as we think about the coming school year. I want to highlight one of the more enriching sessions that we had as a team. We got a chance to, to spend a day-long seminar, which coincidentally was provided by a former Harvard professor, Dr. Richard Elmore, that was focused on the need for school districts to really work hard at developing a coherent set of strategies that are going to positively impact student outcomes, all students' outcomes, as part of their work. And so it seemed particularly relevant, because as we head into our visioning and our strategic planning efforts, this was a very timely discussion for us. And I'll confess, these conferences are a good place for professional learning, but they're also a good place to seek out and recruit future talent. So I believe we made some, some progress on that front as well. The budget, tonight's main event is the Board of Education's final approval, hopefully, of the 2018-19 district budget. We've had the opportunity over the last number of weeks, months, to share information about our priorities, what level of investment we believe can help us to begin to address numerous key areas of focus where we believe we need to continue growing and improving as a school system. I do want to reiterate that developing a, a school district budget happens a bit under duress, given the inadequate funding of public ed. We've, we've done our best to prioritize many important areas. I continue to advocate for increased levels of funding for public education in Oregon as compared to current levels of funding. You know, some, I might say that a good target would be somewhere around the ten billion range for K-12. It would make for a catchy bumper sticker, ten B for K-12. But staff is prepared again this evening to answer any remaining questions that the Board may have before it does take its final vote. And for the public's information, the Board and senior staff spent the hour before this regular board meeting, meeting with the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission, better known as the TSCC. We had an opportunity to answer their questions, and I'm very pleased to report that our budget was certified by the TSCC earlier this evening. We're hoping that that approval trend continues this evening. And then lastly, and lastly, I want to acknowledge that we've been receiving questions and concerns from members of the broader community about our contractual relationship with a particular child services provider, based on news reports that some children who've been separated from their parents at the border are being housed there perhaps. We're, we're gathering facts at this point to determine what, if any, services this particular service provider, or any others for that matter, may be providing to children on behalf of federal immigration agencies. What we can say as educators and child development experts, and I think any parent can understand this, is that separating children from their parents traumatizes families and causes long-term emotional damage and injury to our children. I want to commend Director Sparza Brown for, for bringing forth and the Board supporting the resolution this evening. I think it affirms our organizational values. So I stand by as superintendent, and certainly will continue investigating and looking to any instances that, that may not be consistent with that, and reporting out to the Board of Education as we learn more details. Thank you.
Thank you. Busy year-end. So at this point, we're going to move to student and public comment. Before we begin the public comment period, I'd like to review our guidelines. The Board thanks the community for taking the time to attend and meeting and providing our comments to the Board. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing reflections, concerns, and thoughts. Board members and superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our Board Office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individuals, employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as personnel matter. And if you have any additional materials or items, or you don't get quite through all your testimony in the three minutes, if you provide them to Ms. Hewson, she will get them to the superintendent and Board members to distribute. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share your comments, begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at a time. We appreciate your input and thank everyone for their cooperation in advance. Ms. Hewson, do we have any students signed up first?
We do not.
All right, the, the adult, public comment.
Yes, our first two speakers are Claire Dannerlein Manson and Pam Newth. Alberto Chavez and Callie Thorne Lad.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alberto Chavez. I'm one of the persons that work here in the Maintenance Department. I just have a few questions that most of the people in Maintenance wants to ask to you guys. Has been rumors about that you're going to be getting rid of the Maintenance Department, that you believe that you can save money by getting rid of us. The first question is, with the 2012 bond that the taxpayers approved, you promised the taxpayers that you were going to have enough money to hire new people in the Maintenance Department and being able to keep up with the Maintenance Department. At this time, we haven't seen no hire, no new hires, and you are cutting personnel for the Maintenance Department. We would like to know where that money went, and if that money is, is going to be coming back. That's my first question. The second question that we have, the Maintenance Department handled plumbing, roofing, electrical, and fire safety issues. With your good conscience, can you just justify you're going to be making any more cuts in the, in the Maintenance Department? Right now, we are not able to maintain the schools. I don't know what else is people telling you, but right now, we're just a reactive team. We are not a maintenance team. And the last question that I have is to the, to the President of the Board. When you were here before, you were one of the persons who voted to get rid of the custodians and most of the Maintenance Department. Do you consider that the Maintenance Department is in a better shape or worse space than when you left it, when you decided to cut many jobs? That decision caused you a lawsuit and a lot of money to the district from the Custodian Department. I would like to know if this decision that you're planning on doing for the Maintenance Department is going to cause the taxpayers and the school district the same amount of money? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and questions.
Thank you.
I just, I'd like to ask Ms. Hewson to respond back to these employees on the discussion that we have during our budget discussion as it pertains to maintenance issues. Thanks.
Hi, Chris Nelson, N E L S O N, last name. Thank you, Board and Superintendent, for the opportunity to share a few comments. I'm here tonight on behalf of Kairos PDX. I'm a Board Member, co-founding Board Member and Chair of the Real Estate Committee, and also a daytime practitioner as a real estate, commercial real estate developer. I'm here to sort of register and voice a formal grievance to the PPS Board, the entire Board, related to what we perceive to be a very long, non-responsive and disrespectful treatment of Kairos PDX in the negotiation of our renewal at Humboldt School. Last September, this Board made a public commitment to not displace Kairos PDX as a tenant at Humboldt School. Shortly thereafter, and as a follow-up to that commitment, on December 5th, we tendered a formal offer and letter of intent on behalf of the program to PPS staff to renew our lease hold at Humboldt. I followed up with several emails over the last six months to PPS staff, in January, February, March, April, May, and again in early June, requesting a formal response to our proposal. We've acted, in our minds, very professionally. We've exercised an extremely high level of patience that far exceeds any reasonable standard. We feel ignored and disrespected. I can't help but wonder if all the tenants in your buildings are treated in this manner, if it's just a discrimination against Kairos PDX as a charter school, or worse, for being a predominantly black school. Finally, on June 10th, and again on the 19th, we've had meetings with a few of PPS's leadership team, and we're told that PPS is unable to negotiate an extension of our lease due to restraining order related to the access program lawsuit. I've been practicing commercial real estate as a developer and landlord for over thirty years, and I've never witnessed the level of unresponsiveness in a landlord-tenant relationship, ever. I would, I'd be put out of business for handling my dealings in this manner, and I'm appalled that the district that touts equity would treat the only options serving predominantly black kids and one with few culturally specific tenants in this manner. What's more troubling is that we, we believe we're your partner. We're a partner of the district, and think of ourselves as a member of the PPS family. But after six months of waiting, we still are no closer to a formal commitment to lease at Humboldt for next year, and we've lost our patience. I ask all of you to please make a commitment to continuing our lease at Humboldt, and would make another appeal for, for a deeper partnership, and in particular, make, make us a priority, and let's all get back to work on eliminating the racial equity and achievement gap that exists in PPS, and especially for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Lastly, we have Nathan Sramek and Zalika Gardner.
Good evening, Board. My name is Nathan Sramek, S R A M E K, and I'm a litigation associate at Schwab, Williamson and Wyatt. However, this evening, I'm here as an interested resident of Northeast Portland and as a parent of a future PPS student to speak on behalf of Kairos PDX. Portland Public Schools has enacted a racial education equity policy, to its credit, but by doing so, it has bound itself to follow that policy. The sweeping goals and expectations articulated in the equity policy establish that the district will no longer tolerate the pervasive and unjust impacts of the racial educational achievement gap. In the words of this district, "Portland Public Schools' historic persistent achievement gap between white students and students of color is unacceptable." Kairos PDX is an important partner to the district in its goal of addressing that gap. Since the approval of its charter in 2013, Kairos has served a majority population of students of color with the express aim of closing the achievement gap, and it is succeeding. Data supports this, a walk-through through classrooms and the halls of Kairos during the school day supports this, and the district most recently recognized Kairos's critical role in advancing its own equity policy by renewing Kairos's charter earlier this year. One of the more powerful statements to me in the equity policy is Portland Public Schools' commitment to the principle that by the end of elementary, middle, and high school, every student by name will meet or exceed educational standards and will be fully prepared to make productive life decisions. To ensure that every student by name leads or exceeds academic standards, the school board has recognized that each and every student must be seen to be included in the district's educational system. The district recognizes in that equity statement that a part of equity is to make sure that all members of the district's community are seen. Despite its successes, the student population targeted, to the very student population targeted by the equity statement, Kairos is concerned that its students are not being seen, and that is manifest most dramatically in its lease of the Humboldt School. To many members of the community, Humboldt School is the ideal location for Kairos's work with the district to implement the equity policy. As the policy states, "The district intends to create welcoming environments that reflect and support the racial and ethnic diversity of the student population and community." The Humboldt School is located in a historically black neighborhood, a neighborhood which is and has been rapidly gentrifying for some time, and the, the district agreed to lease the Humboldt School to Kairos so that Kairos can provide a welcoming environment that reflects and supports the racial and ethnic diversity of the student population.
Can you wrap up with one last session, sentence, please?
Sure. By permitting Kairos to use the Humboldt School District communicates to students of color, "We see you, and we want you to be successful." But unfortunately, the district's treatment of the school through its lease has sent a mixed signal and one that counteracts that equity statement.
Thank you.
Good evening. Excuse me. My name is Alika Gardner, and G A R D N E R. I'm a co-founder and current Education Director at Kairos, and I'm here to just share, people are curious about what's really happening, right? Like, what does that data actually look like? What do the results actually look like for our kids in the interest of being seen? In the interest of being seen in a way that is a language that people seem to best understand what we think about kids and their success. So I wanted to share a few things. So you all know we're four years old. We, as, as a school, we have kindergarten through fourth grade this year. This is the first year that we've had a large enough cohort to take the... This is the first year that we've had a large enough cohort to take the S-Back. So, we've all been wondering, right, as you all are, like, what's happening? How are things working? We have been tracking and making sure that we're holding ourselves accountable by doing the NWEA assessment, which is a nationally-normed assessment since kids have been in kindergarten, so we have a sense. So, we had both of those data points that I wanted to sort of share and put out there and just say, we're doing our very best to deliver on what we said we were gonna do and what I know is close to y'all's heart. Like, that's my belief, as I say here, is that that's our point of reference, is that we really do want kids to be successful, especially the kids who have struggled for such a long time, not by any fault of their own or by any lack within them, because we've not, we've just struggled to figure it out, and that was our commitment when we came together. And here's how we're doing. So, this year, we had 121 students. We had, across those 121 students, 75% of those students gained four or more percentage points against children across the nation, which means, which is our, our goal, is that children will grow more than a year's growth in a year's time. For us to close that achievement gap, it means that if a child comes in and they're at the 50th percentile, and we're able to keep them at grade level at the 50th percentile, we're not doing our job. That we want that child to end at the end. Our goal is the 75th percentile, which we've tracked and understand is actually college-ready, which is also something I know you all have encountered. You can graduate and not be college-ready. We really want our kids to actually be there. So, the fact that we have 75% of our kids already there is really encouraging, and it's one of those data points that I wanted to share with you. We're, and I should give you the demographics too quickly. We're about 73% kids of color currently. We are 40% free and reduced lunch currently, and we have 16.5% of our kids spent identified on IEPs, just to get a lay of the land. In regards to the, the S-Back information, we have a small cohort. We're a small school, so we can speak to trends, but they're pretty powerful in our estimation. So, when we look at the trends across the district specifically for black students, this year, when we look at the data, we had about, we had about-
Maybe you could finish your, just the last point, and then if you have things that you want to share, we can get it distributed to the full board.
About 11% of our black students across the district met or exceeded on S-Back, which hurts my heart, and I'm sure yours as well in many ways. We had, in our very first year of doing that S-Back with that third grade class, we had 36% meet and another 27% nearly meet. In our very first, like, adding specifically to black students. When you look at the student body as a whole, we had almost 50% meet, another 27% nearly meet. So, we're, like, trying to think of my concluding sentence. You've given us trust in continuing to be a PPS school, to do this work. We are working so hard, I can't even express to you, to deliver on that on behalf of children and families. We have every indication that that's exactly what we're doing, and when you look at other schools around us, we're the exact same population, doing something different and doing it well. We're asking for your support.
And I need you to wrap up. You've gone way over.
I know. It's a really long sentence. Asking for your support-
You breathe, so I saw the gap.
That you started by allowing us to be at Humboldt and be supported in that community, and our excellence is in every fiber of those walls. And we're just asking that you meet us where we are and not allow people who have access to systems and all kinds of things that have been denied us for such a long time to usurp that.
I really need you to wrap up because we have rules for the- So, given that only some of the individuals from the Kairos community may be aware of this, but there has been meetings over the last six months between PPS leadership and Kairos leadership. As everybody knows, if you've watched our board meetings and just the work of the district this last year, we have a significant shortage of facility space and the opening of two new middle schools, which was a huge equity play for middle schoolers in our city, that that shortage has been even more evident. At the end of May, we made a really difficult decision to divide a school program and put it in two different locations, and that splitting of the school community resulted in about a million-dollar increase in the cost for running that program. And we're currently in litigation, and we have a Friday court date. So, not only do we have a lot of pressures on our facilities, we've also been in discussions with Kairos, and we need to play out and see what happens in the legal arena. So, I appreciate everybody coming this evening and sharing your points of view. We also have some fiduciary and legal responsibilities to the district as well. Ms. Houston, are we through with public comment? Thank you. So, next, we have the first readings of two policies, and I'm going to ask, Director Sparza Brown's been really busy. So, she's gonna kick off the first one. It's the first reading of the homeless students policy, and I'd like to ask Director Sparza Brown to introduce the item.
Right here, okay. So, the proposed policy was brought to teaching and learning earlier this month, and that is the McKinney-Vento homeless policy. And after a review by ODE, it was found that in seven, in the eight areas that they look for for compliance, we were compliant with seven, but not in, in a particular area. And these were elements that are addressed in this new policy, and specifically, the areas that we had to particularly target was assurance around that homeless students are identified and assessed for needed services, provision of dispute resolution when eligibility or school placements are in dispute, ensure homeless students don't face barriers to accessing academic and extracurricular activities, including magnet schools, summer schools, CTE, AP, online learning, and charter school programs, and immediate enrollment and retention of homeless students despite lack of records or documentation or unpaid fees or fines or absences. So, that, all of these changes were, are reflected in the new policy that you have in your packet, and the Teaching and Learning Board fully supported it to move forward to our first reading tonight.
Did you have discussion in teaching and learning? It's not clear to me whether these were deficiencies that existed before or whether these, this is non-compliance that has resulted from new mandates through ESF.
Thank you. That was, it was non-compliance through new mandates.
Okay.
So, we're just catching up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
I just wanted to say-
It was a new mandate that we hadn't yet had time to be compliant with, but now we are.
I think we should get the compliance passed.
We will be.
So, the proposed, board members, are there any questions or comments in addition to Director Constam's?
I think there are staff here, too.
I just have another comment, which is that I had the opportunity to sit down with the staff recently because I participated in a panel on homeless students in the region, and it was really incredibly impressive to me, the extent of the outreach efforts that our team does to qualify students for these federal benefits. I mean, we have a very aggressive and robust and compassionate response to make sure that, you know, bus drivers are all trained on how to look for signs. If a kid mentions in an offhand way, "Well, I've changed my stop because I'm sleeping on the couch over here," boom! Let's get you in and talk to you and get you eligible for the kind of supports that are provided through McKinney-Vento. So, it was very impressive to me, the, the level of outreach that's going on with that department.
Thank you.
And I agree. I mean, they were obviously very committed to our students, and that is just such an important, vulnerable population, that the high level of services is crucial, so.
So, the proposed policy will be posted on the board website, and the public comment period is 21 days, with the last date of comment being July 17th, which is our next board meeting. Contact information for public comment will be posted with the policy, and we'll have our second reading, which is our approval reading of the policy. Absent any substantive comment that may need modification, we'll be having that second reading at the July 17th board meeting. Next, we have another first reading coming from the Teaching and Learning Committee, the Comprehensive Sexuality Education Policy and Plan. And I'd like to, again, ask Vice Chair Sparza Brown to introduce the item.
Okay. So, this policy is kind of results from four Oregon laws around human sexuality, healthy teen relationships, child sex abuse prevention law, and Human Sexuality Administrative Rule, as well as Health Education Content Standards and Performance Indicators. So, together, all of these require a district provide a comprehensive plan of instruction focusing on human sexuality education, which is complete, balanced, and medically accurate. So, aimed at preventing sexual violence and promoting student safety. So, as such, this policy does that. It is quite comprehensive. It will be posted for first reading. It had quite a bit, also, there was a lot of community engagement around this, including students themselves that worked on a student bill of rights policy along with this. So, and I think that will all be posted as well, the, the steps that we went through to get kind of broad-based input into the development of this policy. We unanimously voted to pass this through to our first reading here from our committee.
Director Sparza Brown. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? I know we have some staff on hand also, if people have questions.
Just a related practical issue, not directly related to the policy, is the option for parents to opt their student out. One of the practices that has changed is that instead of just asking for an in or out, that specific units were listed out, which, one, made what we're teaching much more transparent to families and resulted in, in substantial changes in terms of the numbers, lessening of the opt-out and allowed a more targeted opt-out, but opting in for a lot of other, ooh, healthy, healthy dating relationships, that's a good, I want my, I want my student in there, so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
I think one other piece-
Well done, staff.
One other piece, kind of relating to that, actually, was the discussion around culture and, you know, religious beliefs just differing values and the importance of the different ways of opting out that would still ensure that teens and, and students had access to information about being safe and medical issues and, and relationships, so thank you. It was really good work.
Any other questions or comments? So, like the last first reading, this will be posted on the board website. The public comment period is again 21 days, with the last date of comment being July 17th, 2018. Contact information for public comment will be posted with the policy. And absent any substantive changes that maybe need to be considered by the Teaching and Learning Committee and then subsequently by the board, absent that, the board will hold a second reading and approval of the policy at our July 17th board meeting. Thank you, Director Sparza Brown. Next, we have a second reading of our wellness policy, and the first reading was held on April 24th, and it's been open for public comment. And I'd like to ask Director Constam, who's the chair of that committee that brought it forward, to present the policy for its second and final reading.
This has been a long time coming. It's my understanding that we did not receive any public comments since the first reading. We had some discussion, considerable discussion, when this was introduced. This is not only a retooling of our wellness policy, but it also integrates several new changes in state law, including the PE mandate. Looking at Jenny Withicam, I think we had a sufficient discussion on this the first round. So, again, to the public who may be listening, please check this on our website and provide any comment that you have so that we can integrate it before we adopt this and turn it into administrative directive.
So, the board will now consider Resolution 5667, the wellness policy. Do I have any, do I have a motion? It's been moved by Director Constam, seconded by Director Anthony. Any board discussion? Or, I guess first, is there any, a public comment?
No.
No public comment? Any further board discussion?
Just a comment. So, I think these two policies, the, the last two policies we've talked about, I'm, I'm glad they were together because they, they really go to some of the critical components of student well-being. And, and I think one of the things that has become clear through research is that student success in school is at least as dependent on what happens outside of the classroom as it is, as what happens in the school. And well-being issues are, they're critically important for students. And public education has to find a way to, to tend to the well-being needs of students. And these two policies, I think, are, are sort of emblematic of a, of a, a new understanding of the responsibility of school districts. And sort of, talking a little bit about the, the budget, looking ahead to the budget discussion, I think one of the big investments that we're making in this budget, in this new budget, is around student well-being needs and supporting social-emotional development of students. This is a long time coming, and I think it's, I'm very excited about this. So, thank you for all the staff work and my board colleagues working on these two policies. I think it's really great.
Any other board discussion? Director Anthony?
I would just like to make a brief comment. I think the wellness policy is absolutely wonderful. I am very, very happy that we are adopting it, and like others have said, thank you so much to the staff. This last week, I went to the Oregon Health Plan Roadshow, the OHA held at Madison High School. And one of the things that really jumped out at me is that the state is really desperately under-investing in pediatric care. And as we're voting on this, I just want to turn to you out in the audience and the people watching at home, and remind you that there's an election coming up. And as you see candidates, as you see your legislators, please remind them that they need to be voting to fund children's health care and children's education.
Thank you, Director Anthony. Any other comments by board members? So, I think the board will now vote on Resolution 5667. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any ayes, any noes? Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted by a seven-to-zero vote, with Student Representative Tran voting aye. Thank you again to Director Constam and the committee for bringing it forward, and all the staff who assisted with it as well. Our students will be better served, as has been outlined by our board members. Okay.
It's really comprehensive, so thanks to all of you.
Yeah, thank you. So, we're arriving at this point a half an hour early. I want to note. That's why I'm noting it, so if you impact that, that will be noted. So, the board, acting as the budget committee, has held many hearings, listening sessions, work sessions, and I'd like to ask Vice Chair Moore, who has been managing the process and been the primary liaison, to go ahead and introduce the final step, the final, final step in the budget process, because I think we can't delay any longer. It has to be done by the 30th.
Yeah, we've waited until pretty much-
Yeah, we've waited until pretty much the last moment. So this has been, this has been a long time coming. It's been a challenging year to create the budget for lots of reasons. And I think certainly in the FAO committee, we've been talking about budget-related items pretty much since day one. And I personally want to thank the staff who have persevered throughout. And I've found them to be very responsive. And one of the most recent items, I should have done this before. Well, we got a very, very large packet last week with a whole series of answers to some lingering questions. It was a little daunting to read. I'm guessing it was a little daunting to write. Yes, I need the prop. Yes. So and this was just, this was just the latest edition of the information we've received. So I think we may have some additional questions or comments. So I'd like to invite Ryan and Molly to come up and answer any questions. Again, I want to thank everybody for all the work that's gone into this.
Just a process question. Is there another PowerPoint or we, is this just a Q and A?
The PowerPoint would only be to align us and kind of set expectations for tonight. There's really, it's more for the conversation.
That's already beat us over the head with the PowerPoint.
That's right. That's right. And probably more than else, it's to, it's kind of the recognition that Director Moore just went through. And we recognize that some things are rocky. It kind of sets up some areas for improvement that we'd like to talk about and then talk about some next steps that will help prepare us for next.
Do you want to talk about that now?
It's up to you, if you'd like to do that in that order, sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Well, then I will, I will jump then to near the end. So for, for next steps, I think one of the most important things, and this is in reflection of the struggles that, you know, we've either observed or we've experienced ourselves. And part of it is the struggle with getting our hands collectively around a 650, depending on how you're doing the math, $650 million for the general fund or $1.5 billion for all spending for PPS. And it's a, it's a large daunting task for any human to understand all the details in there. And so it's even more difficult, even though we've had these ongoing discussions in FAO for the past four or five months, it's more difficult if we compress it into the normal two or three month process for building a budget on top of all of your regular jobs, everything else that's going on. It's, it's just, it's almost impossible. So the better way to do this, and this will serve us in a variety of different ways, is to make the resource management discussion an ongoing, year-long discussion and be much more dynamic around how we manage our budgets. So if there are things you're interested in, and I think a perfect example we can talk about is the custodial and the maintenance budget area and some of our challenges in that area, we should have a pretty in-depth discussion in the next two months so that next year when the budget comes around, we're all much more educated about it. And more importantly, if there are opportunities to make some adjustments along the way, we're all dynamic and smart enough to be able to make those adjustments and get on top of those issues. So I think it'll serve us much better to spread the resource financial management over an extended period of time instead of compressing it into a few different months. So the very abbreviated process that we've put up here is just to establish that cadence for regular financial reviews. And it's kind of the standard packet of financial things you'd look at. You'd look at budget to actuals, progress reports, operational things that we're concerned about, a rolling agenda of focus areas that we do in advance so we can prepare the staff and have the people that are accountable for the deliverable up here talking instead of the finance people. Feedback and status on resources and spending. Here's some really interesting things that have come out in terms of things that we kind of collectively and maybe easily kind of dismiss as resource problems or sometimes structural and other problems that, and we're not, the problem is we're not getting to the root cause. We're kind of quickly saying it's a resource problem, we can't afford it, and it's actually something much more structural. And as long as we do that, we have a hard time making progress on those. And then just, that creates our ability to be much more, much more responsive as things change. And then also the, the putting together three to five-year forecast, which I think Claire Hertz is used to doing, and I think is something she could do very easily, but just making sure we're highlighting these issues and we know we can plan and we're not surprised by, you know, the changing tides, at least the things we know about, pirs and other headwinds we have. And that's really in response to, you know, areas for improvement. And I won't read the entire list to you. Some of these are the CBRC concerns that they brought up as well. And you'll see some are, some are finance things, some are things that the budget director, the person in my job or in this position should be squarely responsible for. Some are bigger issues like making sure that we do have a well-articulated strategic plan so we can align resources to that plan. How best to involve the Board of Education? And then the notion of some level of continuity. And that continuity for organizations of size, it comes in the form of it's either through the organization and the organization is relatively consistent, or it's people that have been their jobs for a long time, or it's a system, or it's a process. And we had, we had none of those. So if we had one, it'd be a much easier piece than when all four are kind of up in the air. So, you know, we're going to put a budget system in place which will help, we develop more solid processes, that helps, all those things. Then we can spend more time having good discussions about trade-offs and less time reconciling spreadsheets, trying to make sure we don't make errors, et cetera, et cetera, managing data. And then I, you know, I, we were all involved in this process. So, you know, if there are other areas that we should be focused on, I think this is our chance to kind of start with a clean slate and make some, make some real improvements. So, you know, we should, we should be honest about that. And I'd also turn that open to staff people across the district as well that probably felt left out of the process. I would imagine senior directors probably feel that way. Principals, I'm almost sure feel that way in how we better involve people across the district. Okay, so those are kind of the next steps. We can go through our presentation, which is kind of regurgitation of what we've talked about, or we can throw it up for questions. Most of the staff people are here that can help answer those.
So these are next steps, but it's probably worth pointing out that some of them you've already started. So throughout this year at FAO committee meetings, we've been getting reports from staff members in various positions about new systems that are being set up, particularly around regular reporting back to, well, back to us, but also internally.
Correct.
And we discovered that there are a number of, number of reports that are supposed to be, that were supposed to be produced on a regular basis that have not been for some time. So we're now going to be sort of resurrecting all of those and that, that's going to help keep, keep the board apprised of kind of where we're headed and how things are going. But it's, it kind of foretells, I think, where we're going, where we're headed. And having some solid, predictable, stable systems in place will, will be a good thing.
And I think that point goes back to Ryan's initial point that this is an ongoing exercise. The formation of the actual budget is really the punctuation mark at the end. But the work and the scrutiny and the conversations around values should be going on all the time, but we can't do that unless we have the information that we need on an ongoing basis. So I think, I think you're talking about the same thing.
So I had a question and actually a request that actually ties really nicely into some of your next steps and sort of maybe the, sort of the go-forward. There were a number of areas in which, because of circumstances, either because we hadn't hired a key person or a plan hadn't been in place yet, again, primarily because we're in a very sort of evolving formative stage in some of, some of the work. And so when we asked questions like, what is the plan, or do we have money in the budget to address X, Y, and Z, the answer was, you know, when this person gets hired or when their plan is done, that's when we'll look at matching budget resources against that particular issue. So I was really happy to see that as part of sort of the go-forward, the sort of going back and having this regular cycle of, or cadence of regular financial reviews. So I had a couple of issues that I would like to, whatever the formation of our committees are this next year, whatever committee has sort of the finance and budget piece of things to have, there were three Division 22 items, which I believe the answers in our questions that we ask, the answers were dependent upon somebody new being put in place and a plan being formulated, and then we'd be able to look at resourcing, you know, how we're going to resource that. So I'd like to just, for the record, note when we're at a point in time that the team's in place, there's been some initial planning to have, especially on those three, the three remaining Division 22 items that are left, to come back to the board with a, and here's how, so that's not when we get to February when we're actually filing the Division 22 report, but that we have sort of an early look at, here's what our plan is, even if it's not a, we're going, likely is that we're not going to be compliant in one year, but it's a multi-year plan, but that we have a sort of early look at that. And again, if there's resources that are needed or something from the board that we're moving in a plan to be in compliance. So that would be one request. And there were, so two other areas that fell into that. We're still looking at what the dollars were that might, might be required in order for us to execute the work. And that was in the sort of student safety Whitehurst report planning. So it'd be great, I know staff's been meeting on a regular basis on how do we comply, but, you know, are we matching if there's budget needs, have we matched that to that? So be interested in seeing that. And then there was also the question about the bond reconciliation and the process by which, or sort of, is it a management control issue or is there, is it a sort of programmatic manager that's looking at the costs going forward? I know we're going to get a memo from the superintendent shortly about the reconciliation process, but I guess that'd be another thing that, you know, is there either a person or some resources needed that, that you're recommending coming forward? So I'd be interested in hearing that as well. But again, those are all sort of few things that we don't know now, but it would be great to have those on the agenda coming back. So thank you for thinking, putting a placeholder in there for those discussions.
So if I could just affirm, Chair Brim Edwards, you know, to some of the areas you've pointed out, for sure, it's, it's our collective interest to make sure that our Division 22 areas are something that we're compliant with. We know that TAG is one of those areas, for instance. We know that, you know, we're seeking a new director in that area. And we certainly, the community has been patient with us on rolling out elements of a plan that we would like to see moving forward. So that's something we hope in the fall can, can speak to early on, our intention and plans there specifically. Same thing with the media programs area. The third area that, you know, we're found sort of not sufficient in is in instructional materials. And as you know, the challenge with that is how do you make up for more than a decade of, you know, inadequate investment in those areas? And so, you know, we're going to, we're going to keep sort of on a rolling basis, you know, identifying resources to be able to do that. I think we'll, you know, we'll make some good progress in this budget cycle, but it's going to be, we're going to have to think about how we explain, you know, that we're being proactive about it. And then I think the other areas are not something that, you know, that are very serious to us. And that is, for instance, implementing measures that were recommended in the Whitehurst report. And so that's very much something we intend to institutionalize in the organization. And regarding how we're doing along some of these areas and any other efficiencies, there's pre-existing board policy around having an internal performance auditing function. So I just want to call out, that's something we intend to resource and look forward to the board's discussion on what areas they want to start prioritizing for us to look at in the fall. So looking forward to giving ourselves that capacity to look at different operational areas in the organization as well. And the board can look forward to a memo coming from me in the next 24 hours on the bond reconciliation funds gap as well.
Other outstanding questions? Oh, go ahead, Director.
About the budget now?
Yes, just, this is, I think this is like the final, the final round. Let's chase them to the ground.
All right.
I just need, on something clarified, that's on actually page nine or the second to the last page with the partially blank page, on the literacy adoption. It says that 2018-19 budget is 9.4 million, but I think Yvonne was clar, was trying to clarify that that was incorrect. Can you reaffirm the total, please?
Yeah.
It's the, what is the level of funding for the continued rollout of the K8 literacy adoption?
Right. Yeah, and so the, so the correct detailed number, and I'll let Dr. Curris correct me here, the correct detailed number, that's, so the amount that's in the budget is 2.4 million, and that's for the.
2.4?
For literacy adoption and for, and for textbook as well.
Because this says 9.4.
Yeah, and so the 9.4 number is not right. So I apologize.
Okay.
That's not the right number.
Because I was a little shocking.
Yeah, so we had, so.
We've made great progress, sorry, Ellen.
No, so the, the budget is correct.
That's what I wanted.
The tracker you have in front of you is, is the part that's wrong. And so there's a piece that, that's the, the textbooks and then the PD.
Yeah. The total is?
4.3.
4.3.
That's correct.
So can you break that down? The textbooks were?
Textbooks, 2.2, I can get the exact number, it's 2.1 or 2.2.
Okay.
And I will, I will write that down. I'm looking for.
All right. Thanks for clarifying.
Just as a matter of record, maybe we could the final.
2.2.
The final version just corrected so that our records are.
Yes. I agree. Yeah, and that's, that's the first error we've come, if you have other ones, let us know.
I was going to ask you, do you know of any others that would?
Not yet.
That we should know now?
No, that's the first one we've come across. We will, we'll correct the error, the record to make sure it's all clean.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
So while everybody's reading their, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, no, Director.
So another pair of numbers I'm not clear on. And again, I don't have page numbers here, but there's two items in a row. And the first one is, has the CEO made recommendations on the amount of investment? And there's 2.4 million budgeted for textbook expansion, adoption, replacement. The item right below that says there's 3 million budgeted for textbook purchasing.
Oh, yeah.
And so are those two different things?
So the, and this actually ties to Director Sparza Brown's question. So the, the 2.4 is related to the literacy adoption, the bigger number is all textbooks.
Okay.
Yeah.
So 600,000 outside of the literacy adoption.
That's correct. The vast majority of the textbook spend this year, and Louise would tell you it's not sufficient, is for literacy adoption.
So just a brief follow-up and then on, on that item, just to point out, I was talking with Dr. Valentino earlier about this, is we really need more books for that literacy adoption because the, the point of the adoption is to give kids a whole range of reading books. And we, our schools don't have that range. And he said we're about 2.8 million short. So that's one of those areas, if we had any extra money under the sofa cushions, that's, that's one place I'd, I'd throw some, just kind of.
That's, that's also a great opportunity for partnerships because it's about building those classroom libraries as well, so.
So Director Constam, if you look at page six, the sixth page, right in the middle, you'll find an item of interest for you. you'll find an item of interest for you.
I think what we're accomplishing in this budget cycle is to get all of our elementaries on level footing with the foundational materials. The good thing about our balanced literacy model is that you're supposed to be making recurring investments, like the classroom library title should just continue to expand, leveled libraries for small group instruction titles should continue to grow. So the good thing is that, you know, it's not a one-time thing.
A lot to mention, so thinking in the future about those interventions, as we build out the MTSS model, there's two and three interventions that are sorely needed.
Yes.
There's a huge gap there.
We'll be identifying those, for sure.
Can I make a request? As you identify these pieces that are under-resourced, could we keep a running tally? Because when we go to the legislature and say, we need $10 billion, I want to be able to say, and this is what we would do with the extra money.
And remember that when we go to share with you Division 22, because one area we're never in compliance is keeping up with core program, with the adoption.
Right.
Plus
Maintenance.
Plus, the same item that you were bringing up here, the first part of it was saying that there's no funds allocated for multicultural or ethnic studies, correct? It says on page 70, all the lines for curriculum development and multicultural ethnic studies have zero funds allocated.
So remember this year, the first thing we had to do is identify the standards, develop the scope and sequence, start developing the units. So we will need to be identifying what those other resources, so this current literacy adoption is just minimal base starting, and then all these things need to be added on. So
So we need to be in compliance with the ethnic studies requirements, by when? Isn't there, it's a state, isn't there a state?
Yeah.
Yeah, around ethnic studies. I don't know the date, the timeline on
Yeah, I'm not that familiar with it, but, but we'll, I mean, you can't do that piece until you have the base curriculum first, and then you start to identify what will be in line with those standards. So we know that's work we need to do. In fact, that work has been identified specifically at the middle level, in especially literacy and social studies. So that's work coming up.
Because we did have a work group, remember the work group that came from Apoano?
Mm-hmm.
And we had some funds allocated, so I guess
That was
Not sure where that work is, what happened with that?
That was in ethnic studies.
Yes.
Apoano group?
Yeah, they started, yeah.
Oh, then maybe, I don't know about that work.
Okay, so maybe we need to look into that, because there was ongoing work that had been in agreement, I think that was a resolution we passed.
We passed a resolution.
Yeah.
And then there was a state, then there was a state law.
Right, so I think that that's an area we need to definitely look into, okay.
So I have a question about partnerships. So in our previous conversations, when we have had questions about particular outside contracts, the response, they land in different departments, but the response was really that each of the new department heads is still in the process of determining his or her allocations from within the budget pot that they, that is proposed in this budget. And so the response back to us was that there's nothing definitive about particular third-party contracts. So I just want to check in with that, because there's something on here pertaining to the Read Together program, which is a, you know, longstanding program that's highly leveraged with hundreds of volunteers, and has shown good results in our district. And it says it's not, not planned. So what's, I'm interested in that in particular, but also the status of other external contracts.
So I'll give a little bit of the background on this one. So this one, so it is, as with good contract management, we leave it up to the director on how they want to allocate their resources. This was one, we went through the first pass at really getting deep on contracts. This is one that came forward as a recommendation not to continue forward. So, but the final decision is still, in this case, this is still Louise's final decision. So, you know, he's evaluating it, just like any other contracts, and that's, I think that's the, that's what I probably say about all contracts, is they aren't done until they're, until they're done.
Oh, so this is saying it is not proposed to be continued, but does that mean that if we pass a budget in which it is not proposed to be continued, it is not continued, or it means it is still under consideration?
So I think this will be, this will be the technical and the legal answer on the budget, I mean, you're passing a budget that's at the, kind of the program level, the appropriation level? So that decision is still Louise's, as to whether or not he would continue on with that contract. I mean, you sure have the conversation about whether or not he'd want to do that, but it's still up to his, it's still at his discretion.
So I guess I'm wondering what kind of visibility the board might have to those decisions that will, the considerations and ultimately decisions of the department heads on some of these external contracts.
Well, certainly the board's voice is in any significant contracts or consultants that would appear in the business agenda. So the board would have visibility and approval for any of those partnerships that are above, you know, the board's threshold.
But not if they just disappear under the cover of darkness.
You wouldn't have visibility if they're not moving forward, so that is true. And I think, you know, given a new cabinet, you know, that, you know, we've been having ongoing conversations around this, where do we have internal capacity? Where do we have partnerships that we want to continue, expand, diminish? You know, we're still getting to know them. And what we're waiting for right now are year-end program evaluations. So to Ryan's point, we're, you know, these are appropriations, these are resources, not a strategic plan, it's not naming specifics in that regard, but we can certainly, you know, make it a topic for a teaching and learning committee to talk about, you know, core curriculum, supplemental curriculum, partners, you know, how do these all jigsaw together to get us at our goals? And I'm going to have some primary questions, just to be transparent about them. Which schools are benefiting or receiving supplemental funds to engage in these partnerships at the central level? If partnerships are, and consultants or contractors are important to specific school communities, and they're doing unique things in their schools, our schools also have, you know, discretion to prioritize those as well. But this is, this is not one we could speak to definitively tonight, as far as that one organization.
Director Sparza Brown, if we could just maybe keep that on the radar for teaching and learning, to have a conversation about some of these external partnerships, and what, you know, what recommendations are being put forward, and what data we have about their effectiveness, and if we're discontinuing longstanding relationships, how are those resources going to be redeployed internally for the same goals? Can we do that? Yeah.
So just on the first page of the second item, you have, you've listed additional FTE that's going to the access program for next year. Has that been communicated to the access community broadly? And that's probably not something you can answer, but
No, it's not.
Okay.
Are you referring to the 6.55 additional FTE?
Yes. Well, it's, it's the, it's the second
Right, yeah, there's a separate tab also.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, the first several items on
And Stephanie, do you want
So our plan is, when we get a few more kind of meaningful details around the planning together, to do one large communication to access community about what it means, and transportation is a big one, too, to try to make sure we have a few more answers, instead of kind of peppering them with each step of the way, every time a different detail or a piece of logistics is sort of settled. So we probably will have something going out next week that gives a little bit of an outline of kind of what's meaningful from a parent's standpoint between Lane and Vestal campuses for access. And that planning has been moving at a fast pace, and we have an update meeting on Friday, along with the other middle school logistics planning.
Okay. The issue with that is I, I don't know that that's, that that timeline for communication has been communicated to the access community, and so when there's no communication, and no sense of when there will be communication, you get all sorts of misunderstandings, and that's not a good place for us to be.
Sure.
So agreed. So our middle school transition team, planning team, it's meeting every Friday through the summer. We've already had a conversation as staff to provide the board with weekly updates for every single school community's scenario. As we've been wrapping up some questions around transportation, and we already know we're dedicating additional staffing in some of these schools, we want to get that word out to those school communities, for sure. So there's been a little bit of a gap right now, while we sorted out those questions, but by the end of the day on Friday, all of the board directors, as well as each of the school communities, will have a status report.
And keep in mind, the families have been invited to do tours at both Lane and Vestal, and have had some touch points, and in fact, we're hearing some really great feedback about how warm and welcoming these new principals have been at getting the families out to the schools, and talking about which classrooms they can expect to see their students in. So they've had some touch points, but it is time, and as the superintendent says, we can get something out more broadly on Friday, if that's helpful.
Okay.
So just as a compliment to the communication to the access families, will there be something, there's some symmetry of communication to Vestal and Lane?
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, absolutely. I think what we're trying to accomplish with how we share information with the parents is, everybody's got questions about how is, you know, the co-location going to have an impact on where will my students, where will my kids be in the school, and what can I expect, and how will we be laying this out? So even though right now we're kind of hitting them as individual school community groups, and eventually there'll be a point where they're merged as access students at Vestal and access students at Lane, right now we're kind of treating them as separate communities, but wanting to give everybody that sense of what can you expect when school starts in August.
And the, I think access is slated for a school climate staff person? Is that the right term there?
Yeah, yes, it looks like
I said C access tab, and I kept looking for the spreadsheet.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Yes, it's, it's, yes, one FTE.
What's, what's that person, which campus, both campuses? What's, what's that person?
That, I don't know. I could, I could find that out, because it'd probably be Daniel who would know that, so I can, I can get an answer for that.
And, yeah, and again, appreciate attention to the IEP caseloads there, because they were clearly overwhelmed at Rose City Park. I can go on, or I can take a break and have somebody else ask your question.
So as I looked at the second item, can we have some, maybe a glossary of acronyms or spelling out that was
Sure. We tried to be careful, I'm sure we missed a couple, but yeah
It was just the second one that got me stumped, as I was going through this, like, oh my goodness, so just
I apologize.
Still not sure I understand it, so thank you.
Brenda, do you mind stepping up to the mic there, our chief of student support services? First acronym, MTSS?
MTSS is multi-tiered systems of support?
No, it was
BCBA.
BCBA, okay.
I know what that is, but it's RBT.
RBT.
Registered Behavior Therapists.
Technician.
BCBA is board certified.
Behavior analyst.
Behavior analyst.
And the RMW?
Resolutions Northwest, it's a contract.
Good question.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Nope. Now I got it.
Okay.
I know most of them.
Thank you.
Did well.
Could we review again? How many FTE went to address single strands? And is there more in the offing, or in terms of the near term? Or, again, there might be a possibility in September, depending on how things roll out. I know that the one spot at Vestal got addressed with the access Vestal funds.
Let me grab my computer. That's the picture. So I apologize that I didn't get this to the board before the board meeting, but I have sent it to you electronically, and thought I'd make a copy for you. So I knew the question would come up, so I've indicated where the FTE has been added, but also wanted you to see the criteria, because in every new thing that we're doing, we're trying to be really transparent about sort of decision rules. So the first staff recommendation we made was to allocate four FTE to schools using the criteria below, which were to the single strand. So we're adding one FTE to Beach. They have third grade at 29, fourth grade at 31, I know you can read the chart. Martin Luther King Jr. will have one FTE, and they already had received FTE for the fourth grade, single strand, at 34. So we continue to watch numbers, and when the enrollment comes, and we believe that adding staff will make a reasonable-sized class, because we don't want classrooms of eight children. That doesn't really work very well.
So is that two total for Martin Luther King Jr.?
Yes, one was allocated earlier, and then
Okay.
One now. Cesar Chavez, one, and James John, one. And then in
Were there other earlier allocations?
No, that was the only one
Okay.
That I know of, but I'll double-check, but I think that was the only one. We had other allocations, but it was just minute pieces across the district where we just had to fix, so that they had whole people in some of the schools. So then there were, there have also been requests, once we get to those thresholds, and then get over that desired classroom goal that we had for the classrooms. The one that we are recommending allocating at this time is one at Chapman. They have 34 students in fifth grade, and the threshold is 34. And they have, even though it's at the threshold, there are no other schools that have a fourth and fifth, fourth or fifth grade class that close to the threshold. And then we also, if you look on the back, are hiring a pool of teachers, or recommending that. We were just talking about getting started on that today. Two teachers for kindergarten, three teachers for grades one through three, and two teachers for grades four through five. And that is so that when we get to fall balancing, and we start to allocate that FTE, we want to have a pool of teachers we've already hired, so we're ready to go, and we can hit the ground running, once we want to allocate those. And then your other question about Vestal-Lane, that's a different chart here.
Oh, about the
I have to find it.
School climate?
Find where the chart went. So, yes, at the, for the access placement, we added 1.0 AP for the co-location, 1.0 counselor, 0.25 secretary, 0.3 drama teacher, 1.0 school climate specialist, and a 0.5 advanced math teacher. At Lane, access program at Lane, oh, this is just showing that that's where we put the counselor and the library assistant. And then at Vestal, we added instructional coach, behavioral, behavior coach, and a 0.2 And then at Vestal, we added instructional coach, behavioral, behavior coach and a .2 for intervention teacher and a .3 for drama.
And that, that's at Vestal?
That's at Vestal.
So will the younger kids have that, you know, the, the walk to math? Will the math teacher there be?
They will have the staffing to make sure that students are getting math at the level that they should be getting at their rating level. Might not look exactly the same because they're in a different configuration, but they will get it at their level.
And the climate person at Lane, what, what's their function?
Do you want to talk about that one?
It was our chief of student support services that recommended adding that. So that wasn't in that original.
Good evening. Based on discussions with principals and some of the special ed staff, it was determined that we really needed to look at building additional tiered supports specifically around behavior, around school climate. And so we felt that additional FTE was needed to support that work.
Okay, so is that staff person working with teaching staff, with students directly, both?
It'll be a little bit of both. Once we get in there, we'll know a little bit better exactly what we need. We know that we need to provide some coaching and some structures around that. But we don't know if that's going to look like some support to students, coaching teachers or providing additional PD.
And is that for the whole school?
It's for the whole school and how we're going to work together. Yes.
Great, thanks.
Question for somebody else, but I'm looking at this, this chart that has sort of criteria to address high classes and at the bottom it has Chapman with fifth grade at 34. Should I interpret this that that means that Chapman's getting an extra FTE because they have 34 students in their fifth grade? So we've heard a lot from GROAT and I was just looking at what they had said. And they said they've got a fourth grade classroom at 34 students and I'm wondering, is this the criteria that we apply across the board? So will GROAT be getting, if, if they meet this other criteria? I don't know if it's identical to Chapman, but I'm just looking. It seems like we have some identical circumstances and Chapman getting.
So Chapman has 34 in all of their fifth grade classrooms. I don't have the chart in front of me that tells how many classrooms they have. So according to our records, there weren't any other school districts, I mean, school, classrooms where all the classrooms were at that level. So sometimes it's how they group them and move them around, but we will all go back and check GROAT.
So you're saying, for example, just for illustration, say if they had one fourth grade class at 29 students and another one at 34, they wouldn't get it. But if they had a 34 and maybe a 33, that maybe they, they would?
Right. So we want to be consistent in how we apply the staffing rules. If we're talking class size thresholds that are part of our labor contract, we have three options for what to do to support the class size. At GROAT, just to be specific, they have two fourth grade classrooms at 32 each and they have two fifth grade classrooms at 33 each. The difference at GROAT is that four of the 64 fourth graders are in sped self-contained classrooms. So we're reserving a seat for them. They're not always occupying 50% or more of the time. So that's important also to take into consideration. And in the fifth grade, six of the 66th fifth graders are in sped self-contained classes for 50% or more of their time. So yeah, that's the total number at that grade level, but it's not apples to apples exactly. So those are the things we have to look at.
And we also have to look at how many schools are there. So you, I know, have gotten emails from schools where at the, I think it was grade three, they were at 30, which is that threshold, but there were eight schools there. And so we, we have to look at. Yeah, then the staffing that we have, we also look at the, the other demographics of the school to determine that. And that's why we're trying to keep track and be transparent in terms of the criteria and those decision rules.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I was asking because GROAT is, I mean, they just left, I think, Title I status, but you know,
Right.
24 languages, 60% free and reduced lunch. I mean, it's, so if I, I'm just, again, what got captured here was that they had 34 students in a class and I'm looking at Chapman, 34. And I know Chapman has its, even though it's on the West Side, has a diverse student population. But it's just being able to answer people's questions like how, how is that different? And I think superintendent's added some important information. But it would be good to just make sure that we're being consistent.
Can I ask about?
Can I add one more thing about that? Remember these were on projections. So the other thing we're looking at is did they get to that threshold last year? So that was another part of the story on Chapman. Not remembering the whole story and I wasn't here, so. They had the need last year and then it, they stayed with the same number of kids, in fact, even grew more, something like that. But what we also look at is the trends and we're also getting emails from people who are saying, well, we've counted the actual students and we believe they're going to have this many students. And that isn't how we did the staffing. So that it's not on actuals, it's on projections. So the projections, they give us a number. And then I forgot to add one other thing. When schools ask a question or challenge the, the decision rules or criteria that we've identified, we've been going back to PSU because they're the ones who do our projections and saying, given this new information, would you recommend that we modify this? And in the case of Chapman, the answer was yes. In all the others, it was not right now, wait for fall balancing.
The, we just want to underline, these are arbitrary decisions in the allocations. There's a whole panel of senior directors that comes together every time. There's a situation we should take another look at and the content, context will continue to change. All we're trying to do is be fair and objective in our criteria. You know, if there's four schools that meet a cri, a new rule, a new criteria, then all four schools should benefit. But we're also trying to be judicious with the number of positions we have, knowing we don't know exactly what to expect in the fall.
So with these allocations, how many as yet unallocated FTE remain? Unassigned, I should say, allocated but unassigned.
I believe we were at 26. But remember, part of that is trying to anticipate what SS is going to require us to do when we identify those schools that need support. And support might not always be adding another staff member. So when we look at that FTE, we think about it as some resource to provide support for schools. So it won't be that we will allocate all of it. And it won't all be in staffing, but we're trying to hold back some so we actually can address those schools that are identified.
So we, we won't know till the fall which schools are going to get designated comprehensive or targeted support. And so this pool of resource, it's not people on a bench waiting to be assigned. If we get named certain schools that are low in reading level, this is where we may want to use the resource, maybe not on a specialist, but on partners to come in and, and provide that resource. So.
Or interventions, which we haven't even started.
Or evidence-based tier two material or, you know, it has to be a, a package that makes sense for the kind of support and intervention the school needs. So this is why we've been a little bit sort of careful about, you know, giving out sort of this, this precious resource. It could be bodies, it could be other supports.
But, but also hopefully we will have already done so because it won't arrive as a surprise to us which schools are designated. So hopefully with the reworking of our formula, we've already identified those needs ourselves and allocated extra resources.
And the fact that we've made the equity fund an equity fund, they also hopefully have a little more purchasing power for, to, to identify their own supports and interventions.
I also wanted to add that this criteria, it, it could be in the fall that we have schools that meet these criteria and that there are so many, we have to choose. So it may be that we develop more criteria if we have, can only allocate to certain schools. And it, I'm going to guess that it's probably going to, we are going to prioritize those schools that are identified as comprehensive or targeted support.
And again, just to put it in perspective, there was a lot of non-formula allocating of staff to the schools you might not think should be getting them. And those are some of the same schools you heard a lot of noise from.
Can I ask about the, the pool? So you mentioned two kindergarten teachers, three teachers for grades one through three, two teachers for grades four to five. Are we still hiring a pool of teachers in specialty areas that are his, that are always in high demand? Like, you know, math and sped and ELL, that kind of thing?
Yes, so we will have a, a series of concurrent pools that will run together. Those details will be in the body of the posting of that pool that will go up later this week. But if you think about what the requirements for that are, they are the appropriate licenser for K-5 and some opportunity to provide indications of preference within the application process. We will, we have or will do the same with our high priority areas that are identified as still having significant vacancies. And then I would just also add, one of the reasons that we're posting the pool as the, the broader range or any of these pools is that as if we receive notification of additional vacancies over the summer, we want to be able to accelerate with having a group of principals that will be evaluating candidates in these pools. We want to be able to accelerate hiring into any of the unanticipated vacancies so that we aren't in a crunch and rushing in the fall.
And a follow-up on, on Director Bailey's question about, about the school climate specialist at access. The, the notion is those will be split 50, .5 at each site.
He's got a million of them.
Have these school communities, Dr. Curtis, have these school communities with the additional FTE been notified?
I believe so. I, I can double check, but. Yeah, I think they were.
I believe last week, the Office of School Performance was working with principals to, to confirm so they could move forward with hiring.
So that's a school community is different from school principal. So I wanted to make sure what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would have been notified.
Okay.
In their SMT and they could.
School principals are who has been communicating with their schools about their allocation.
In ideal world.
I think this is to Director Bailey's continued point that we need to keep communicating these changes. And, and I'm also thinking, you know, just as further response to the question around, you know, the helpfulness of having a school climate, we're, we're also monitoring sped staffing allocation. So it may have been that they had what they needed per IEP requirements, but we recognize they were still a need. And so that's why the school climate specialist and not necessarily sped teacher.
I, I just didn't know what the specific function was going to be. So that was purely for informational.
Well, that then brings me to a question on when we're talking about curriculum. I can't remember, was there curriculum for, to, for special ed? Is there any dollars allocated for a new special ed curriculum? Because I know that we really haven't done much with the materials there in decades, I think. Okay. Remember that 9.4 for literacy then? Did you say that was gone?
Very unfortunate mistake, yes.
So on that list, list for the state of stuff that we.
So our CAO has prepared sort of a budget forecast, you know, if, if we gave him an open check, what it would take across content areas and grade levels. And it's just under $22 million to provide them with tier one core curriculum in the content areas. And that's not even looking at specialized curriculum in areas like special education. So just so you have a number in mind around just base material.
And acceleration. Correct.
So I have one other category that falls into the sort of check-in in the fall. And I want to thank the, the detailedness of all the, the answers to the questions. I had asked some questions about access and Pioneer. And I would like also this fall for us to have a check-in on Pioneer. I know we've already voted for some CapEx improvements to the facility. But as we move into this next school year, so CapEx, capital investments versus OpEx. So I know we made an investment, which were some really basic infrastructure improvements in Pioneer. But I think we also had extended the invitation to have a discussion with the Pioneer community about other supports for their students that really weren't the sort of basic buildings. And it would be good in the fall to have a discussion about that and what sort of resources might be required.
Well, I think that that goes along with, I've been asking for some information on the consultant. So I think that they said in here that the consultant is funded? Yeah, but it was more of what their recommendations were and then so, so that's. So it kind of falls into the white horse division by two, like what's the follow-on piece and are there resource? But it falls with what you're asking about Pioneer. Yep.
So just continue that thread through this school year versus we pass the budget and.
So we'd still like feedback.
Director Rosen, do you have any questions? Director Anthony?
To.
Moses.
So this just occurred to me for whatever it's worth. So let's assume for the moment we pass this tonight. So go home and get some sleep. And then can we sort of reconvene sooner rather than later to talk about in, in real terms, like really day-to-day, ground level, how are we going to do this budget process differently next year? Because I think it's going to take a fair amount of thinking through what's doable, what's, what would be helpful. You know, like how do we do that?
Right. Yeah, and I think.
If I could answer initially here, that's already at the top of the list as our new deputy for business and operations comes aboard. So fortunately Claire is quite expert in these processes and is going to be a great asset in addition to the team. And I know that both our interim budget director and CFO are, are going to be slated for some special time to transition and share our learnings and how this process went this year and, you know, do a proper handoff. And then, you know, we certainly want to get into the rhythm of just being effective fiscal managers as just part of our year-round process. And so, you know, would certainly welcome sort of starting to outline what that looks like over time. And I know that she would be very interested in learning about, you know, where we are.
So I guess what I'm asking though is as you do that, can you loop in the board? Because, you know, how you do things among staff is, is one thing. How we get looped into this is a whole other thing.
Yeah, I agree. And on this, on this short list of concerns, you know, how best to involve the Board of Education, I think that was. I know all of you felt the frustration. I think we, we struggled as well, you know, kind of what level of detail and how to engage, so. so.
So I'm guessing you suffered a little frustration, your own self, is my guess.
Suffered being the upper of the board.
I got more. Okay, so just one, again, thank you for this incredibly detailed response. It's really appreciated from, I know a lot of people were, were part of this, so thank you. So just note that the basement area of Beaumont is still kind of a mess. And by the way, at Boys Elliott Humboldt, the, one of the preschool rooms, there's been sewer issues there and it's, yeah. Library. So thanks for the clarification that we're cutting five FTE out of 52. That's a pretty steep cut when we were on a, kind of on a plan long-term for building that. And that's disturbing to me. And again, with, with what's left in your pool of money, that would be near the top of my list. I really value what media specialists can do in schools. They are additional instructors. They have, do really well at teaching research skills, which are really in growing importance for our students. And, and so I'm, I'm looking as part of our visioning process and strategic plan, what is the role of media specialist? Because this feels to me like it, that role has been devalued. And I don't know that that was, you know, an explicit judgment, but again, you look at the budget if you want to know where values are. This makes a lot of our media specialists half-time at elementary level. Is that going to impact our recruitment and make it more difficult to recruit media specialists? I'm hearing that it is and that's an issue. And also, I've been told that a remaining piece of our PAT contract is to negotiate like a workload for media specialists, and that has not been addressed yet. And, and that sort of ties in with the whole staffing level as well.
Yes, so PPS and PAT agreed to examine and determine a threshold level. So in the, the allocations for, or the staffing levels, there wasn't an immediately apparent ability to calculate a threshold, an appropriate threshold for library media specialists during the negotiations.
So are we back talking with them about this?
I believe discussions have been ongoing, but there is, there was not an, there was not an apparent way to calculate that. And so we agreed to come back to the table and continue to discuss how we might do that.
Yes, no. Just adding quite.
I can, I can check and see what ongoing conversations or if any decision has been agreed upon on that.
Because it seems like this is a de facto, almost workload. So I'm, so I'm trying to figure out how the, the funding for media specialist now, at least it sounds like at the elementary level is every school gets a .5 unless they're at 80% or more historically underserved students.
And so my understanding was it was only the non-formula allocation that shifted from year to year. And so the allocation of library and media specialist at, and I'd need to look at the individual schools, but that it was the non-formula from year to year that was reduced.
That's exactly.
And they were vacant, or again, we did not, we did not do any unassignments. I mean, we did not do any layoffs.
Right, but that would have been cutting from a full-time to a half-time.
I would have to look at school by school, but that, I.
Okay. So really what, and Kathy's absolutely right. So really this is not unlike the staffing formula where some schools had non-formula media specialists. And so really what we're reverting back to is the 16-17 model, where it was all, all media specialists were consistently allocated to schools based on the 80%, you know, if, if greater than 80% historically underserved or if, if not. So it's, it's more consistent, takes away that non-formula.
And, and I, I mean, I, I'm happy to look into specific schools because this is the allocation, so this is the, the shift in allocation. That does not mean that we reduce the number of library media specialists. Because remember, the FTE allocation that goes to the principals is then allocated depending on what decisions are made at the school level in various ways. And so I think we'd need to specifically look at how that, how the overall allocation was then captured in.
So, so this is the sort of centralized baseline.
Right.
And there will be some schools that will choose to use some nonspecific funding to.
Foundation is a common place for schools go.
Okay. So that's something I'd like to hear back on on October 1st.
Thanks.
Often what equity grants go, not our equity money, but the external equity grants often go to library.
That's correct.
Yeah, one of the, one of the lingering questions about middle schools, one of the many, is, is around schedule and the intersection between sort of the art of scheduling and the budget. And I, I think over the summer, it would be very helpful if we could get some more detail about how middle school principals are handling schedules and what it means for electives for students. And, and also, one of the complaints I've heard for many years is that PPS has not provided support to principals in developing the art of scheduling. So.
Time to go.
But apparently we're going to Beaverton, so. So, so anyway, so as we go in the summer, if we could get some, some information about how that's being handled and what kind of supports are, are going to be given to principals and to manage scheduling. And it's not just for middle schools, it's also for K8s, maybe even especially for K8s, because that's been a real problem.
Yeah, and that's, I feel like I've gotten ambiguous responses around the whole middle school scheduling of, it's not prescribed, there are options, but is there really money for options, particularly around the dual-language immersion? So I feel like that's really mushy. Are we really going to end up with any of the middle schools that aren't on the sixth period? They, and if not, let's just say that's what it is. If we don't really have the funding to do more than that, let's, let's just call it what it is. And if that's what it is, we need to know that. And then that can, that's going to lead to a whole nother discussion about how to address that sooner rather than later.
Right, so this is, this is still a topic that begs much more discussion. We've made some consultancy available to certain principals that have asked on their scheduling, but it's really about how are we trying to make it all fit under the constraints of time and resources? And so some of it we do ourselves, some of it is mandated, right? If it's health, you got to have a quarter. If it's B, you got to have at least a quarter. But we also play dual-language a certain way. So how do we look at our secondary language pathway? You could do it in a way that actually still affords you two electives a semester, but we have to open up that conversation to special education students. It might be the one engaging time of the day when electives are very important. Is there another time when their service delivery plan could push in during core instruction? And, and so these, these are all sort of the big questions. I think we need to continue to have focus groups with our principals and others about still, and still preserve those elective options and provide equitable access to everybody who wants to, to engage in, in those as well.
And I'm going to ask fellow board members to help with my memory. We heard from Madison students about the value of, I think it was restorative justice? And I just, yeah, so I just, and I, I understand the shift that's, that's going on. But I just want to point out, there's a couple of areas in the budget where we're shifting from contracting for some direct services to students or teachers and, and shifting to providing support for teachers or principals. So I think of around the literacy rollout, instead of having TOSSAs and coaches, a lot of them working directly with teachers, it's more having TOSSAs work with principals and have the principals work with the teachers. Am I, is that a correct, that might be a simplification, but is that a correct read? And in the case of RJ, the same thing, where there was a, essentially a, a contract staff person at Madison and at some other schools, working directly with kids that might conceptually be replaced by an RJ's staff person, maybe internal PPS staff person working with staff rather than directly with students. And that's a shift in a, if, if I'm accurate, that's a shift in a service delivery model. And is that going to work? Will, will there actually be at least, maybe in the short term, maybe longer term, a reduction in services to students? Just want to throw that out there. And these are lean times, it's not, not a criticism, but a point of discussion.
I share the question that if we are, where we are making shifts to develop our own internal capacity, how do we know that our internal capacity has been developed and those students are being served as well or better than they were before?
And again, it's, it's not so much that internal capacity, but a different service delivery model.
No, I think you're capturing the concept, Director Bailey. I think most districts, you know, when they don't have the internal expertise, they call on providers to build capacity. And that should be a gradual release. It should be a core function of our district. Nobody's questioning that restorative practices shouldn't be part of our muscle in, in our school communities and as an organization. I don't know if Chief Martinic wants to expand at all a little bit about how we're going to continue to promote, support restorative practices in our schools. And I know there was at least one, one set of students who did, who did appear before us on an evening, and it's clearly important and valued to them and to us.
Hello. So our resolutions Northwest contract did contract for, I believe it was to help out with five specific schools. They were not full-time employees, so it wasn't 5.0 FTE. I believe it ended up being about 3.75 FTE total for all five schools. We have brought that in-house instead of doing 3.5 FTE for five schools. We're in-house doing 2.5 FTE. We're going to work with our MTSS team in order to provide that coaching and that support for the school staff, provide some restorative circles, teach teachers how to do that. So we're expanding our services to multiple schools in the district instead of just focusing on five. There is a shift in that a little bit because it won't be FTE specifically just in those five schools. But what we want to do is we want to partner with our MTSS TOSSAs and really look at a continuum of services along that line and provide more restorative practices, approaches for, for more students in more schools.
So just my open question, and again, with no judgment implied, is at Madison, for example, students had a go-to person who apparently was pretty, pretty well received by the students.
Right.
What we're moving towards is something much more diffuse. And will students be able to find that support? Because realistically, teachers are going to, some are going to take to this like ducks to water and some aren't, and it takes time to build up those skills and so on.
Right. So what we've done is we've built up our own internal capacity specifically within those schools. We want to make sure that we're starting to replicate that in more schools so that we're not just doing five out of 79 schools. So, so we're trying to expand those services in schools such as Madison. We do have some teachers who have taken a lot of interest in that. We also have school climate specialists that will be filling that role. And then also coaching counselors within our MTSS work, we're hiring four school psychs that are also going to help in the rollout of that work.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
One more, one more observation is, summer school supports, not having funding for that. But also, on the plus side, I'm really excited that we're slated to have a career and technical education plan by December. That's a huge, important step forward, along with the other strategic initiatives. So there are some really important foundational things that we're doing in this budget.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Director Bailey, because that was a question I had. Just knowing that the, I was, the Office of School Modernization had said that we needed to have, in order just to keep Benson on track, we have to have a master plan approval by, I think, the beginning of January. And I think the question as a board, not for tonight, I don't think it's a budget, budget issue, but is there, needed to be a separate Benson CTE plan track that's going to be nestled under the larger district CTE plan? But I'm concerned just if you back map the timing of when we need, if we need, if we keep Benson on, to keep Benson on track, if we get a plan, the district-wide plan in December and then drill down on the work for Benson, it's, we're not going to have the work done in time. So there's some planning and timing work that needs to be done in order for us to keep on, on track. So there's maybe a bifurcated but complementary track.
Yeah, I think we all recognize this is an important area. We want to have, you know, a coherent plan about. And it's not that we don't have any plans right now because we have close to 60 CTE pathways now. We have some planning that also is inclusive in Measure 98 monies and, and programs. But I think what we've observed at the beginning of this conversation is whether it's career tech, whether it's language pathways, whether it's sped service delivery, whether it's arts education, it's happening, but is it strategic for the long term? And are we giving ourselves enough flexibility in the spaces we're designing that, you know, even if you continue the adopted pathways that currently exist, you know, is, is it flexible enough for us to continue evolving that over time? And, and it's certainly something we don't want to have hold up, any, any facility modernization work either. So the good thing is we're bringing on some, some capacity in this area. You know, some of the forthcoming leadership announcements include a new senior director for college and career readiness, who we are explicitly making sure, you know, bring some level of understanding about how CTE programming can, can support our work.
Last thing, in terms of single strand, I'm really concerned about Scott School. They might not have met the criteria, but I think we should think carefully about them because they're absorbing kids from Wrigler and that's. and that's, that just adds to the stress of a school. So that's kind of if somebody deserves an extra FTE thrown in, that would be something that doesn't fit the mathematical criteria.
This is the work that's exciting with our TIVA schools coming aboard is, are there, you know, are there unique circumstances and contexts in school like Scott where maybe, maybe the numbers don't necessarily warrant another FTE, but maybe it's other kinds of supports and interventions that take into account the needs there?
That's a high level of IEPs with those kids.
Okay. So how do we address that need versus just making classrooms of, you know, small numbers of kids?
So going back to the literacy, thinking about that, I'm glad that it is a lesser amount. But within that amount, I think we need to continue to think about that a percentage of whatever we spend on curricular materials and content areas be targeted for kids that probably need the intervention services. So I'm concerned as we're building the MTSS model, that we still have so many gaps and no materials or really help for the teachers with those struggling, struggling kids that aren't on IEPs. Thinking about maybe with some of the equity allocation that some schools might get, that they can be, look into purchasing their own materials. But also thinking that that's a conversation that should happen at the district level to identify what are the kinds of materials that we want them to use in the first place, rather than having no direction and then going off on something that may not be the best use of their funds. So.
So under the MTSS director, there are two positions. One is RTI and the other one is school climate, right? So that is exactly what we are intending. Those positions are going to be working on the MTSS model and working with the folks that are, that are doing the literacy adoption so that we can begin to identify what are those interventions that we need district-wide. And I'm anticipating, I mean, because we would love to do all of this. We don't have any more resource. And the truth is, you've got to have the core first. If you haven't, if you don't have the core, then you're intervening for 70 to 90% of the kids, and we'll never have enough resource to do that, right?
Yeah, but the flip side, if you are a parent of a child that's struggling and we don't have options for them.
Right, so we're not.
Plus, there's a dyslexia work that I want us to think about as well that's coming down the pipe. And the needs for that.
Again, why we don't want to spend all that 26 FTE on staff members and allocate it because it's the only other place to look for, how do we help those schools with kids who most need those interventions? And that's why our superintendent was saying it might be that we're going to get intervention programs versus another staff member in some of those schools. We will also have Title I allocation that will come with ESSA. We don't know what it is. But we will be very frugal and very intentional and very systemic about the way we approach that. And so I guess I just want to apologize to the whole board that we don't have all these answers to these questions because right now, this week, we're really focusing on hiring the people that are going to actually clarify the rest of this and get some of these things worked out.
Thank you for all your hard work. It was more of, I think, thinking too of, you know, in our spending, what are some priorities that we would like to keep putting out there?
Exactly. And we will start identifying and letting the board know this is what we really need and what the cost is so that it's always on your radar. And we'll be positioned to do that in the next few months, once we get off the ground with the adoption. So I welcome the questions. We just don't have, I hesitate to answer when I don't really have the key people here that can actually give me definitive answers right now.
This is a question of the budget team, but do we still have the funding stream from the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission for the literacy adoption? That was an ongoing funding stream. It's like for like, for five years, so. And it's a restricted grant.
It goes for TechSmart.
Okay.
That's what Louise just said.
Okay.
Not the literacy adoption, it's for TechSmart.
That's, yeah. There was something bundled with the literacy adoption, whether it was, yeah, anyway. I just, we didn't lose that money, right?
And if I could just share, the principals where we added that FTE did find out this morning.
Good.
And we looked up the ethnic studies. So ODE is supposed to identify standards by 2020. And then they're supposed to have an implementation rollout by 2021. There was a news article that said something different, but we just looked up the actual House bill. So we have plenty of time to implement, I mean, to figure out what we'll implement, but we have to wait for the standards.
Yeah, I think there may have been a PPS board policy.
Yeah, there was a resolution.
A resolution.
Yeah, we do have.
Not a policy, yeah, a resolution, yeah.
So we need to look that up because it was earlier.
It was pre-2017.
The policy was, but the date of to finish was.
I know that Courtney Westling is tapped into that work group, that ongoing work group as well, legislative.
So I don't have a question. I just want to acknowledge and thank the superintendent for the discussion around the earlier raising the issue of the District Internal Performance Auditor. So we have a board policy and haven't had that capacity recently. And I think as we take the handoff from the Secretary of State's office, it's going to be an important tool for the district on how do we most effectively use our resources. So I'm going to thank you for.
And I think TSEC in our discussion earlier also made the note, there's going to be a gap after this coming year that's even going to be a bigger bridge to try to build. And we have to be looking at where the operational efficiencies might be. We've had conversations around, you know, transportation might be one area, but there's probably other areas. And, you know, having a little bit of capacity to look at that is going to be important to try to recoup some resources.
So I think unless there is some compelling additional questions, I'd like to ask for a motion for Resolution Number 5668 to impose taxes in the adoption of the FY 2018 budget, 2018-19 budget for the school district, Number 1J, Mottlem County, Oregon.
I move that we adopt the budget as proposed.
It's been moved by Director Constam and seconded by Director Sparza Brown. Ms. Housen, I think there's some citizen comment?
Just one, Steve Beal. School Board. I'll try and be kind here because that was an amazing, absolutely amazing discussion and the answers, and it's unbelievable. But, and I will point out to Dr. Curtis that we have a person who, we had a resolution, and point this out to the superintendent too, that we have a person in our district who has the charge of doing multicultural education and helping our teachers with that and being a resource for that. And that man is a pretty terrific person. And you should remember that, Sparza Brown, because you voted again, you tried to kill that, multicultural education. Last, I already talked about the board and the budget in general, but I just wanted to comment on one last thing here again. Last June, the board passed a resolution that asked the superintendent to look at the ESL program, particularly looking at the possibility of extensive English language instruction. So I guess in our, it's our vision that we have children who can't speak English and we put them into classrooms where nobody speaks English. That's our, that should be part of our vision, visionary thing? Or is that part of our organizational values to have children who can't speak English, older children, and we just put them into classrooms and give them, where they have little or no chance of success? That's the way we're approaching it. ESL teachers, almost everyone I ever talked to says, no, that's not how we should do it. We should be doing, we should be teaching these children English as much as we can right off the bat. And the reason you don't see those ESL teachers or hear them all the time is they've pretty much given up. The ones that I talked to, it's worthless trying to get the school district to do that. Now we're going to the push-in model, which isn't going to be very workable either. We've cut supposedly the ELD classes at Benson. So Dr. Moore actually talks about social emotional needs of children. Well, yeah, send them into a classroom where they can't speak any of the language. That's really good for their social emotional needs. That's a really good thing for us to do. It's just, it's crazy that we cannot figure out how to deal with children who are older children, who are immigrants who can't speak English. We can sit here and do, yes, let's get ice out of there. Hey, I'm all for that. But it's pretty, if I wasn't so kind, I think I would suggest it's very hypocritical for this board to sit here and vote 7-0 for something that doesn't really directly necessarily affect us, where in actuality, we could really be helping all of our children who have this problem, and we're doing nothing. In fact, we're going backwards. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional board discussion? I'm just going to, I think, then close by thanking all the staff. I know this was a difficult year. We had sort of an evolving situation. We at one point had potentially a very large budget gap because of a fiscal issue that we were able to get fixed at the legislature. The staff just did a great, great job. And I think looking to the future and how we can do it better, I think we're, that's going to be even better with the improvements. But I really want to recognize the work that the staff did to sort of get us through this year in a very difficult situation. And congratulations Superintendent Guerrero. We're almost on the eve of your first budget vote. And, you know, I think just the comments by the Tax Supervising Conservation Commission of like, nice job in a pretty difficult situation were very appropriate. So thanks to everybody who helped get us there. Any other final comments?
Just a brief comment. As we've discussed things tonight, at times we've been smiling and kind of joking around just because we're human. And at the same time, I think everybody up here and in this room realizes how many millions of dollars short we are and how the state of Oregon has once again short-changed children all across the state. And I think each of, I'll just speak for myself. I feel that very personally and very deeply about and have pointed out the things that we just don't have the money to address or we could address, but that would lead to a deeper shortfall over here. I'd love to have more media specialists funded right off the top, and yet I have no idea where that money would come from that wouldn't cause a dent somewhere else.
Thank you for the comments. I think I mentioned in my opening report that we're trying to bring across the finish line a budget developed under dress because to Director Bailey's point, we're trying to make a meal and we don't have all the ingredients. And it pains us to not give more attention to certain areas, especially for our students who have not been historically served. As someone who has spent their career as a bilingual educator, as an ESL teacher, and as a personally, as an ELD learner myself, you know, I understand what an impact it makes when the experience is an impactful one. But at the same time, here we are, I also want to thank the entire cabinet and their teams as well as our budget development, small but mighty team, for pulling it all together. I'll just point to every time we spoke publicly here in a meeting, we always ended with this budget timeline. And it had about 30 occasions when we talked as a group about the budget. And many of those were with the board and open to the public's scrutiny and questions. And we've tried to do our best to answer questions. In some cases where we haven't even had the bandwidth to think through some of the answers and didn't want to be irresponsible in giving you an answer that just wasn't reality either. So we've tried to balance our own comments in that area and done our best to present a feasible budget that'll allow us to do this next stage of work. And I think we all expect that the next time around we'll go even better in the spirit of continuous improvement. So thank you for your consideration, but this is our best thinking.
Thank you. Did I say, did you want to say something? No, okay. No, no hand motions, anybody? Okay.
I just have one quick point.
Director Constam.
I just want to say that I really appreciate how, at the end of this process, the superintendent and your leadership team put forward, framed the budget in terms of whether it was six or seven strategic priorities, which is something that I think we all had been grasping for, that sense of order for this effort. And we kind of recognized that, you know, we're going to have a strategic planning process and we've been flying without that for a while. But I think even though it was kind of the backdoor approach, it really ended up bringing a sense of order and prioritization to this process and made it much easier to understand how we were parsing things out strategically. So for me, to wrap my mind around whether these resources are really being deployed in service to the goals that I and we care about, that was a really critical step. So, and now moving forward, before we do have a formal strategic plan process, as far as I'm concerned, those are, that's our guiding light. Those six or seven principles that have been identified and that were the bedrock for the development of the budget and the prioritization of resources, that's, that's the lens that we need to use to order all of our work. So I really appreciate that coming through near the final stretch.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Student Representative Tran?
Aye.
The Resolution Number 56, nope, hold on. Resolution 5668 is adopted by a six to one vote of the board with Student Representative Tran voting aye. Thank you all. Next up, we have two appeals to the board. The first appeal, I'm going to ask Vice Chair Sparza Brown to discuss it. It's something that went to the Teaching and Learning Committee.
Yes. So this was the ESL appeal that we took to the Teaching and Learning Committee to be able to under, it was quite intricate, so to understand it a little better and had discussions with the staff, the teacher that brought it forward. And the Teaching and Learning Committee voted unanimously to uphold the superintendent's decision. And it had to do around credits, the names of classes and sheltered instruction, particularly around students that are newcomers. A big piece of this is that the law only allows newcomers to be in segregated programs for a year. Oregon allows up to two years. But the intent of services then is to initially teach students English, but pretty quickly get them to teaching content standards through sheltered or easier English while upholding the same standards. We cannot water down the standards for English learners. This is an equity issue. Segregation and non-segregation is also an equity issue. So therefore, we devote to uphold the superintendent's decision. And the teachers will continue to work with the Teaching and Learning Department and the ESL department to align those courses across the district just to ensure that, you know, there's quality. just to ensure that, you know, there's quality coursework and that the courses are the same, you know, it means one thing in one school, it's gonna be the same quality and standards addressed in, in across the district.
Any questions?
Yeah, just, just a comment. There seems to have been some good first steps in terms of collaboration around resolving this issue in a very positive way. And we want to keep monitoring that to make sure we have a happy ending. So I expect that would be part of Teaching and Learning's committee's role.
Start already, I think we've gotten some emails from Director Bailey that the meetings have started to occur, that, so work is underway already.
Oh, okay. So the board will now consider Resolution Number 5669, Resolution to uphold the superintendent's decision on the Step Two Appeal. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Director Rosen and seconded by Director Constam. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on Resolution 669? Any additional board discussion? I want to take, just thank the Teaching and Learning Committee and the chair for taking that on. I think, you know, these, we came to the board once before and I think sometimes these things don't always have a straight path. And this is one of those cases where I think we got to a better outcome for the individuals who filed the complaint and for the district, so thank you.
And most importantly, I think, for the students.
Yeah. So the board will now vote on Resolution 5669.
Did you ask for a public comment?
I did. There's a public comment. Board will now vote on Resolution 5669. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did Moses leave? The resolution passes on a seven to zero vote. Student Rep does not vote on appeals. We have a second appeal this evening. Board members, it's been in your packet. It's Resolution Number 5670. It's the Resolution to uphold the superintendent's decision on a Step Two Appeal. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Director Constam and seconded by Director Moore. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on Resolution 5670?
There is not.
Is there any board discussion on the resolution? The board will now vote on Resolution 5670. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The resolution is adopted by a six to one vote. Thank you, everybody. Next on our agenda tonight, back on track, back ahead of time, is the Board Summer Calendar. So, and also the regular Board Meeting Calendar. It's Resolution 5675. I think we're just having a discussion now and this is gonna be voted on as part of the business agenda. So our policy requires that the first board meeting in July, we adopt the calendar. Roseanne, if she were here, I think, would say that we should maybe move that up so that we're adopting our cal, our summer, our next year's calendar before actually the first month of that school year. So as you can see, we have scheduled meetings laid out. On occasions, board meetings may be held in school buildings like we did last year. There's a notation that we, you know, may look to a two-day evenings for either work sessions or special meetings. And that would be in the interest of when we have a particularly full agenda, trying to have shorter evenings. But that will be something that we can discuss at our retreat on August 3rd. As we were discussing the, sort of what the summer calendar would look at, we surveyed the board and staff on what sorts of things we needed to do this summer and then what sort, what were things that we wanted to do this summer. And I think we tried to pare down to the things we need to do. And just looking at the calendar, July Board Meeting, we need to devote, I think, a fair portion of both meetings, on the 17th and the 24th, to the Lincoln Bond Master Plan and getting that approved so that we're on track with that. We also, Board Leadership discussed, given we're at the end of the calendar year, starting the evaluation process with Superintendent Guerrero. In addition, in July, we expect we'll have a fair numbers of the 2018-19 contracts that just flow out of the start of the school year. In addition, in sort of the second board meeting in July, moving, in addition to wrapping up sort of the backwards-looking evaluation for 1718, some goal-setting for the superintendent for the, this upcoming school year. And then in August, seeing sort of a shift to, now that our school year starts, the fourth week in August, really looking at, you know, just are we all set for, we've got a, it should be an exciting start of the school year. It's hard to believe we're talking about this year, but opening of the two new middle schools, which will be a really, hopefully, a transformational experience for a thousand kids. But we also have some potential facilities issues as, as part of that. Also, looking at our health and safety planning for the upcoming year. And actually, the second meeting in August, school will have started, so we'll be.
So the first day of school is?
Monday.
It's a Monday.
The 27th.
The 27th?
Yeah. So our board meeting in August is the second day of school.
And what, what was the date that you said for the board retreat?
August 3rd. I'm sorry, you're right. I think, how did I write that?
Okay. Just checking.
Yeah, no, I think, I don't know how I got that date. So, and then mixed in with that, and this will require, I think, some more discussion, but mapping out how we build through the process of the timeline of getting the Benson master, working backwards from Benson Master Plan approval to a CETE plan, the enrollment, and also the budget-related issues. So that's a sort of summary of, or the preview of the next two months. And three board meetings from now, we'll be back, kids will be back in school. When do you start school, Moses?
End of September.
Oh, nice. So any?
I know there was some, I know the superintendent had some concerns about being, staff being available for a full board schedule through the summer. I'm, I'm curious as to whether this proposed board schedule is agreeable and doable to, for you and your senior staff.
What I appreciated about it is just, you know, calling out for the year, a cadence of every other week generally for regular meetings. I think, you know, the board will have to engage around what other occasions, you know, staff would need to be there. So, you know, decision around any committees' work sessions and things like that. I think that's where it starts to sort of, you know, become a little bit more challenging to make sure we're prepared and can, can be present for those. But for the summer, I, I think Chair Bren Edwards called out a few topics we really do need to discuss so we stay on track. And Lincoln is an example of that. And so we're, you know, we'll be conscious about building any vacation rotations of senior staff that we need around, around, around these dates as much as possible. But I think for July and August, these, these are workable.
Anything else? I should just note, we, because of the, because we're now complying with the state's complaint policy, there's just a regular cadence of things that come through that we've got to hit some deadlines. Also, I think we've, I know in, for sure in the FAO Committee, there's a couple of things that are sort of timely that we need to get after if we're going to, for example, do anything with this particular building. We have some litigation issues, certainly the potential Kairos lease. So there's a host of things that, just moving along. But I think the goal will be really sort of condensed, condense the work and if tonight's any indication, stay on, stay on schedule. So with that, I'm gonna ask for any board committee and conference reports. And Moses, your last student rep report, so I'm not gonna call you first, but if you, if you want to do a last student rep report, you can. So any, any committee reports?
Enrollment and forecasting met. Primarily focused on two items. One is boundary changes on the West Side that actually cleans up some errors in the, was it 2016? West Side Boundary. And I sent a note out to that on board member, to board members already, but you should be getting, staff will be working on Resolution and Maps to help clarify and help you walk through that. But the committee voted unanimously to make two recommendations for boundary changes. We also took a first dive into hardship petition data. It's a massive data. We don't have, we have basically one year. We, you know, have asked for more detail and might still ask for more detail further yet. Trying to figure out, you know, we just have a lot of kids moving around. And how do we minimize that? So we're, but it's one of those where you, you look at some data and you hope a couple of things jump out to you as really obvious and that wasn't exactly the case. So we'll continue to look at that. And been working with staff about bringing, to one of our August meetings, bringing PSU and somebody from the city of Portland to talk about enrollment projections, both short-term and sort of longer-term. The PSU is more shorter-term. The city is more longer-term in terms of the city plan. And I think that's something everybody said they wanted to hear at the full board. And that will kind of help set the table for some of the things that we're looking at in terms of both capital planning and, and enrollment balancing.
Director Rosen, did, is the, okay. Do you have anything to report?
Yeah, I reported on it.
Did Bailey do anything?
Yes, we did. So at the last meeting, we had a pretty full agenda. And one of the agenda items was on the transportation. And it is part of the business agenda for tonight. We talked about the negotiations that have been going on with First Student around extending their existing contract. The, the committee unanimously recommended approving the extension as proposed by staff. It includes some changes that if, if other board members are interested, we could go into detail. But it, it is an extension of an existing contract. So there are limits to how many changes were possible to make and still have it be an extension. The extension is for two years. And the other thing to note is that the, the intention is to produce an, an RFP in the foreseeable future that would be, that would be open for bid for, for a new contract going forward. The, there's gonna be a pretty long ramp-up period to develop the RFP and then there's gonna have to be a whole process to do that. So this is not something that's gonna be able to be changed anytime soon. But, but the expectation is that we are gonna be opening up for bids in the future for a bus contract.
So although we're going to be approving a two-year, we're also in parallel starting a?
Yes.
We're gonna be in parallel starting a RFP process.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think we should discuss now, so Terry can go home earlier. But that helps clarify my question. I, I think a related question is, have we seen an improvement in metrics in terms of service this year? Would just be kind of a general question. I don't know if that was clearly indicated. Or if that was part of your discussion.
Yeah. And, and among the changes in the, in this extension of the contract is the establishment of some, some metrics, some performance metrics. And there are, well, okay, I'll let Terry go through it.
This was an item that was pulled for further discussion, but Terry Brady, thank you for rerouting.
Well, she was here.
This is it. Back to BESC to, to give us a little more detail.
I'm sorry.
This is an amendment to an existing contract with First Student for a two-year extension. It's not an insignificant amount. It's for the public's benefit, $26 million on top of the 176 we already spent. That's in millions. But could you give us a little bit more detail to, given the discussion here?
Yeah. Were there particular questions you wanted answered or just an overview?
Start with an overview.
Okay. So again, as?
I don't think you need to go into gory details.
Gory details.
Yeah.
Basic details, it is a two-year extension. As Director Moore said, since it's an extension, there wasn't a lot of negotiations we could do with them. Changing the actual terms would mean that we would have to go out for a new contract. But because of the RFP process being fairly long, we knew we had to do something now in order to be able to sure, ensure we had service for the coming year. With the negotiations, First Student has approved a new contract with, a new CBA, excuse me, bargaining agreement with their drivers, which was a large increase in wages. This year, they were at 1650. Next year, I believe, they start at 1825. And so that drove a lot of the cost increases that they needed to try and get an increase in order to meet their business needs. The first year of this extension will be a 12.5% increase over our current rates. And the following year will be an 8% increase over and above that. So next year is 1.4 million more than this year. And then the following year, another additional million. In the past, we've spent about 12 million annually over the last few years. This year, less, at 11.6. But we're projecting out to be 14 million in that 1920 school year. And I hate to say, the gory detail would be that when we do go out for an RFP, we need to expect even higher increases. So.
Part of what we talked about in FAO 2 was just the improvements that have been made and the relationship and the reliability over the last year from when we went into a sort of informal corrective action plan with First Student. And also the improvements that are a result of those wage increases in terms of them not being so short of driver, running into those crises where they were short of drivers that we experienced a year plus ago.
One thing I will say is we changed the model this year in how we delivered our services. At the beginning of the school year, we realized that First Student was still going to be short. And so we built a, a program within transportation where we were using type 10 vehicles. So we type 10 vehicles. So we went from zero of those routes to 11. We also took back several of their yellow bus routes and hired up, what we did is we converted some of our budget dollars from First Student allocations into new FTE for the, for our department. So yes, it was a rosier picture, but it wasn't all because First Student made improvements in theirs. But there's been a lot of personnel improvements just over the last few months. Their regional vice president has been replaced. Their area regional manager has been replaced. They're bringing in a new contract manager out of Seattle. He was up in Seattle dealing with the strike up there. And he's going to be taking over the site for this coming school year. So I think there's a lot of new personnel that we hope are going to bring a lot of effective ideas coming in. But I think there is, we have built a better relationship with them. The contract talks about performance measures. We will be meeting with them weekly. We will be ensuring that they're doing regular reports with us to both FAO and to the board. There, I think there's a little stronger language in the contract that if it were to come down to that and they're non-performing and we haven't been able to get an effective plan out of them or improvement, this, this extension does allow for us to seek out other vendors. And then we would charge First Student for anything above and beyond what we would normally pay them. So there's a reimbursement part of that. What else? We've set key performance with driver counts. We're working on an accountability plan for absenteeism. So that expectation for when we do have inclement weather or, or other issues, that's due, I think, by October 30th is the date that we set. We're forming a transportation committee, which would consist of, of higher level folks, both from First Student and from our district, that will meet quarterly to review complaints, to review performance on time, performance items such as that, as well as the weekly meetings and the monthly meetings that we would have with First Student at our department's levels.
And there's also increased requirement for some communication between First Student and principals, right?
Yes. They're, they're really seeking a higher engagement with our principals and with our senior directors so that they're able to make resolution at those levels. And I think that that, in a lot of schools that already exists with our monthly driver meetings, several of our schools have really good relationships with First Student, Sellwood being one of them, that they met on a monthly basis. And after a rocky start, we got things on track and then we had a very good year with Sellwood.
Thank you.
Can I also mention, there are some internal changes that are, that are coming online. So we've got new software coming that's going to make it easier to do routing and to be tracking on-time performance and, and doing reports and that sort of thing.
Yes, we did award to vendor versus trans, Tyler Technologies. We're in the process of implementing with them, weekly meetings with their project manager and our project manager. With that will come that parent communication app, probably not till a really soft rollout in the spring, and then hopefully a full rollout in the fall. Other personnel changes just in the transportation department. We had the contract with Transpar where they seeded a analyst and director in the department. We are ending that contract, so we will be hiring a new director. And I look forward to meeting our new deputy superintendent boss. So I'm excited to have some leadership.
So the, the other things that we talked about at FAO, we had a very thorough discussion about the contracting process and how oversight occurs and who's responsible for what internally in terms of monitoring and evaluating contracts. And we're going to be getting probably in early fall, I think, a more comprehensive report out on kind of a, a, a general system overview of how we're going to be overseeing, how we're going to be contracting itself, how we're going to be monitoring contracts, how we're going to be evaluating them. And Stephanie Soden will be bringing that back to FAO in the fall. And then the final thing we talked about was a couple of policies. And we only had enough time to give a, a kind of in-principle overview of what these policies are about. But they are generally speaking about real estate. And the first policy we renamed, it is now in, at least in draft form, the current name is Preservation Maintenance and Disposition of District Real Property, formerly known as surplus property. And we're not calling it that anymore. And then the second policy was on real estate transaction. And we only had enough time to really do a general overview. Board members were given copies, draft copies of those two policies. And we're going to be coming back at the next FAO meeting, which has not yet been set, to talk in more detail about any changes. That's it.
Now you've been to a conference?
Yes. Yes, I've been to a conference. Or at least another board meeting. Oh, look, it's another board meeting. The Oregon School Boards Association Board had its summer meeting this last weekend. The organization itself is doing extremely well. Leadership is doing fabulously. Their communications and creative people are, and lobbyists are doing a terrific job. We spent quite a bit of time reworking some of the organization's goals and we made them much more student-centered. And also, for the coming legislative session, we are going to be taking a much more robust view of revenue reform. As many people have said this evening, we're grossly underfunded all the time. And the OSBI's board has just decided we're, we're sick of this and we are going for the whole enchilada. We're going for a revenue reform solution that will fully fund the QEM. It's, it's time to say woo-hoo now. Yes, thank, thank you. A couple of little issues. We are very concerned about the consequences of the Supreme Court's likely ruling later this week on the Janus case. We are already seeing that it's having a very bad impact on labor relations in Oregon. We are also very concerned about the state's current posture on the 2019-2021 biannual state school fund. The initial traditional start of the process is setting the current service level. And that is what funding will allow us to continue giving our current services. The initial CSL from the state is $500 million less than what our districts say they actually need. I have prepared a fairly lengthy memo to the board and superintendent about the underlying reasons. And actually, unlike many things that I write, I think it's pretty interesting because we are finally getting some comprehensible reasons for why we are chronically shorted on the CSL. But for the people at home, I would just ask that you continue to let your legislators know that adequate school funding has to be a priority. And that $9.3 billion is the figure that actually continues current programming. And that is still 1.7 billion short of the amount the legislature's own quality education committee says we need to be allocating for K-12 education in the coming biennial. Thank you.
Thank you. Very timely update.
As a segue to the Paul's comments on the current service level, we had a legislative intergovernmental committee meeting. And one of the issues we talked about is the student success committee that is the bipartisan committee that's touring around the state. They'll be in Beaverton, July, is it 11, I think? Their next meeting is in the Portland area. People want to check that out. And then we are hosting that on September 22. So obviously, this is a place for people to come out and talk about, you know, what we need to do in terms of funding levels and current service levels and, as well as, you know, all sorts of programmatic issues. So they will convene the, the group of stakeholders, the, they being ODE, will convene a group of stakeholders for the student success show that we host, which will include parents and some of our educators, administrators, board members, et cetera. So they'll come to one or some of our schools, but it's really ODE's show. But we will play a part in encouraging the public to come out and share their views. So we talked about that and we talked about the formulation of our PPS legislative agenda for the 2019 session and shooting to have a preliminary district platform in October, at which point we kind of shop it around with other partners to see who's on board for mutual efforts or what things we may go alone if they're really important priorities just for PPS. Some of our top priorities that are already in the works are issues arising out of the recommendations from the Whitehurst report. So staff is already tracking a legislative work group that is looking at the issue of portability of personnel files. So if an educator leaves a building, does that educator's, you know, what kind of changes do we need to make to make sure that all records of concerns go with that educator and his or her files? Also looking at TSPC timelines, Teacher Standards and Practices Commission timelines for investigations. And there seems to be some legislative appetite for tightening those up and making sure there are timely responses, which is, again, another thing called out in our recommendations. And then the third one that is tied to those recommendations as well is looking at the, the language for, around the definition of sexual misconduct through the Teachers Standard and Practices Act. So these are all things that may proceed without a lot of advocacy on our part, but we are going to make sure that they proceed. And they're all, again, tied to the recommendations from Whitehurst. And we also discussed conversation at the State Board of Education around the phasing in of instructional time requirements. And PPS is not lobbying on that issue, but they are considering some, what they call targeted flexibility around the implementation of the standards on instructional hours for students. So at PPS, we've made considerable progress in the last two years on making sure that the vast majority of our students are scheduled for a full, full school day. But some of the, some of the organizations with whom we are typically aligned are advocating for these measures of targeted flexibility on those standards. And as a district and as a, as a committee, we're staying neutral. But that all should be resolved by the end of July, I believe. Their, their meeting in July.
Can you explain what targeted flexibility means?
So there's three different categories that it pertains to. One is, one of the standards that a lot of administrators have concern about is that 80% of a particular school be able to meet a standard. And there are, you know, we have a lot of administrators who think that there are a lot of extenuating circumstances and other opportunities that students want to pursue that should give us the ability to have a little more flexibility around that particular part of the implementation. And then another one pertains to alternative schools and the fifth year that a lot of students in those schools are in and more flexibility there. And then the other area of targeted flexibility is around students who are entering senior year on track to graduate. So staff is monitoring all that closely. And that was-
So I, I haven't, I have been following this with, in great detail, but I would be concerned if ODE required the 90% attendance for 80% of student body at every school and every program. We have a fair number of students in alternative ed programs. We have special ed programs. We have therapeutic programs, all of which would be made impossible if ODE sticks with that, you know, one-size-fits-all, really inflexible standard.
Well, this is a decision that's going to be rendered by the State Board of Ed. So that's how ODE will get its marching orders.
Do we have, I mean, I, I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but I think we as a district ought to think about whether we should be weighing in on this question. Because I think for a lot of students, there's, you know, their, their ability to access appropriate educational opportunities may be taken away.
That, I mean, that is a compelling argument that has been made by some of our own administrators and by our partners. But not, you know, we have not taken a formal stand or testified. No one from our district, to my knowledge, has testified before ODE on the matter.
Well, I think some board members testified.
For no flexibility.
For no flexibility. Yeah. So can, can we, can we get some kind of report from staff about kind of what the implications would be of these, of the new rules?
Well, that's the other piece of it that's really difficult because there are, is, are some murmurs that it could become a punitive measure even in terms of funding. I mean, that's, that's the next step of this. They're not there yet. But the, part of the concerns that have been brought forward by administrators is that they don't have the ability to compel students to register for eight classes if they already have enough credits to graduate. So how can the state compel the high school to mandate that when the high school has no ability to force? So that, that's the argument that's been brought forward by, one of the arguments that's been brought forward by educators. I don't know, Superintendent, if you want to weigh in on this.
I mean, I think a lot of districts are voicing some of the, I mean, areas that you talked about. One is alternative programming. The other is seniors that are on track. I mean, unless we're expanding dual enrollment options and they want to get a head start, that might be one way we could think about meeting it. But there are also fiscal implications to, to offering those, that kind of programming in our, in our schools. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of these themes are coming up by districts as they start to think about what would it practically mean. And yeah, sure, I have thoughts on, on a lot of aspects of what's been being proposed.
Director Constance, there was, there was a fourth exception as well, which is students in some kind of extended learning accelerated program outside of the school district proper. So it wouldn't be counted as seat time, but they're getting the equivalent education. I think that's how.
Right. Well, actually, it was AP, IB, and external, like internships or something. Like if you have a, I can forward to everybody- Like if you have a, I can forward to everybody, um, exactly what the targeted flexibility and then, and, uh, descriptions are, and then also Courtney Westling's, um, synopsis of the status of the conversation and when the State Board of Ed is, is, um, acting on it. Sorry, Paul, did you have something to?
No, I was just going to ask about the timeline.
Yeah.
It might be helpful if, if staff does in fact prepare a little bit of an analysis for each of these, what the, each of these exceptions could mean. Uh, you know, we have over three hundred students in alternative programming now. Uh, eighty-four graduates at Alliance alone. You know, could they do a full day? They're there because of parenting and other ish, you know, variables in their lives right now. So we know they would be an impacted group, for instance.
I, I would love to see an analysis because my guess is that w- we probably can't afford to be neutral on this one.
I'd like to see a draft resolution.
Yep.
I'll convey all this to Courtney. Oh, one last thing regarding the, uh, Whitehurst recommendation is that, um, staff, Mary Kane from the General Counsel's office is in the process of, um, refining a memorandum of understanding with the Portland Police Bureau that actually was underway before the recommendations came out, but that, um, addresses most of the issues that were identified by Norm Frank as problematic in terms of our, um, coordination and communication with the police bureau. So, um, she, she characterized that as a very collaborative, constructive process that's moving along.
So just a question about, um, the legislative agenda. So as, before it goes out to partners, um, I think we should probably bring it back to the full board to, so we have a sense of, um, is there a consensus about what's on the agenda, how we might prioritize them? Um, so it gives you take between sort of funding and a whole host of other things. It'd be good for us to sort of weigh in on what, how we wanna prioritize our work.
Right, and one, one of the other issues mentioned was the custodian civil service board, which is-
Right.
And that's, that's gonna be us alone.
That's gonna be us.
The, um-
That's just, we're, that's gonna be us alone. I don't think there'll be a coalition working with us on that.
Yeah, and the-
Is this one of those universe of one statutes where-
Universe.
Like we're the, we're the only district in the state that is-
It's only counties of over six hundred thousand, I think.
Right, which is us.
Yeah.
Right, 'cause Beaverton kept moving the, or Washington County kept moving the number up, so it was only a momentary county.
Yeah, so it's a universal one, which I can't believe is constitutional even, but anyway.
You over there in the black coat. Um, but with regard to the legislative platform, the general plan is, um, October, float our legislative platform in October for full board vetting and discussion. Um, and then approve it before the end of the year and then work in concert with our partners on things that we are aligned on and work on our own on things.
So does that take into account pre-session filing? I think it, we gotta do it earlier, earlier than that to get, if we wanted to pre-session file bills or have committee files, which-
Um, 'cause I think, I think that's like mid-September.
I don't know.
Let us like the days.
Oh, for anything that we're-
If we wanna-
We did have some discussion on that, anything that we're initiating on our own.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
Moses.
Well, on a lighter note, uh, the student representative- the student rep- so, whenever it was. Uh, Rena and I took a deeper dive on the student representative report. And, uh, it's kind of exciting to me at least is that, um, we kinda discovered that it doesn't just, student voice or student leadership doesn't just encompass the student representative policy. Uh, and what the council, um, is also in agreement with is that we start looking into the student leadership, um, policy in the schools, uh, and seeing how, um, though the student representative policy and the student leadership policies complement each other, um, and how we can incorporate, make it more not so much like centralized at the district, but, um, dividing it across our high schools and, you know, as we build a stronger foundation down to our middle schools or whatever. So, uh, I guess it's just, that's kinda exciting. And although, and just to see that how much it's grown, uh, since we first started revising and editing the policy and that, um, it's stretching into the next term, which I guess it kinda works out in our favor, um, which kinda sets into motion just, um, what we wanna do or our strategic plan for the district student council. So it's exciting to see that we're being projected into, um, a direction that, uh, is really gonna help us grow. And, you know, please invite me back for when you guys vote on it and things like that, 'cause, uh, it'll be exciting to see it. If you voted in, so, thank you, everybody.
That's fantastic.
Anything else on committee reports? Um, okay, uh, so, any other business? Any committee refer- I don't think there's any committee referrals. Um, the business agenda. So the board will now consider the remainder of the business agenda, having already voted on resolutions five, six, six, four, and six, five, six, six, seven through five, six, seven, zero. We also have another addition to the business agenda, which is resolution-
Five, six, eight, zero.
Five, six, eight, oh, which everybody should have at their, um, place. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Director Anthony and seconded by Director Spizer Brown. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the business agenda? Is there any board discussion about the business agenda? Um, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Student rep- tran- this is the last vote?
Aye.
Uh, the motion passes on a seven to zero vote with student representative Tran voting aye. Um, the next regular meeting of the board will be held on July seventeenth.
Excuse me, we still have thirty-five minutes.
No, the meeting is adjourned.
You meet your timeline.